To all stand for the Pledge of Legions.
We are the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I guess I'll just do, we don't have our person here. So, we're gonna start with public audience. And I have a list, I asked everybody to sign the list. Oh, I'll get it. Oh, thank you. Thank you. And so we'll do it, remember everyone, we have fi- you have five minutes to come up. Um, you said public audience, sorry, not public hearing. And the first person I have is Marjorie Winter. And Marjorie, you know, you have five minutes.
Yes, alright. And I have the pen that goes with the.
Oh, the sheets, the beautiful town pen, big pen?
Yes. Yes, alright, so, thank you, um, Marjorie Winter's 111 Old Farms Road. Um, I know I, we submitted a letter from the Conservation Commission. I just wanted to reiterate some of the points of the property on all of the entire town. Um, the Conservation Commission voted unanimously that this parcel is definitely connected habitat, um, con- um, contingent on how the property is maintained and managed. It is currently maintained as mown grass, which absolutely has no habitat value whatsoever. Um, but, uh, and there, you know, there's an expense of maintaining this parcel as a lawn, and that's been put forward as one of the primary reasons for disposition of this property. Um, however, viable alternatives to the current mowing are, um, do exist. The Open Space Committee had actually been in discussions about alternatives that would support the town's pollinator-friendly goals while substantially reducing mowing costs on the entire site to a far less burdensome once a year, or even once every other year, um, mowing schedule. Um, this discussion occurred prior to learning that the sale of the property was being negotiated with one of the abutting neighbors. Um, this points to the necessity and importance of following the correct disposition process by consulting all the land use boards, uh, prior to disposition, uh, which we've been doing somewhat after the fact. Um, the Conservation Commission encourages this board to review the Great Barrington Pollinator Plan. I, we put a link in the letter from the Conservation Commission. It is a great plan that, um, the small town of Barrington is doing in Massachusetts. And I know it's been said that this is only a third of an acre, um, and that seems very trivial, but actually, if properly planted, it would be exactly the kind of waystation on the pollinator pathway that Simsbury has been advocating for some time. Um, the pollinator, uh, this, this property is also highly visible, and it would be a great potential as a demonstration site to the public to show alternatives to high-maintenance lawns and the ecological values of even small areas like this for the pollinators. Um, the argument has also been put forward, the development of this area might look messy. And I would counter that that would not be the case if the area was properly designed and maintain, installed. And much research has been gone into the best methods of establishing such metal, and we have a lot of expertise in this town that could go towards help it. And I think a lot of volunteer groups that could help put this in. So I think that's well worth exploring. And it's also been stated that the fifteen thousand dollars from the sale would go to the Open Space Fund, and that's great, but I would argue therefore, it would be the best interest of the fund um, to have an open bidding process for this property, um, if it was decided that disposition was needed. After all, why wouldn't we wish to get the best price for this fund? And it's my understanding that other parcels in town are similarly being considered for possible disposition. Again, as the Conservation Commission stated in our letter, we encourage the board to request a more thoughtful study of the ecological values of these properties, not only individually but collectively, because collectively they might, might be more valuable. Um, so that we do not rush the disposition without a, a more thorough analysis of the merit of all these maintenance issues as well as these properties. So that's why I thought, thank you, I just wanted to reiterate the points that we made in our letter, but thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. Okay, um, Michelle Abbott? Coming up? Oh. You asked to be, oh, are you?
No, I'm, no.
Oh, you're here for the, you're, you have to wait.
I'm here for the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, okay.
I'm here for the.
I thought you wanted to say something and tell us how great your experience with the town is.
It is.
Okay, um, Diane Nash?
I don't know what you'd do if I didn't speak yesterday. And I should start off Diane Nash, hi everyone, so sorry. Um, and I do thank you all for your service. Uh, I think whenever I talk to people about land, and probably that's the most I speak about, and people say, yes, well, our land is our most important asset, it's absurd. And I kind of always say, yes, it is, except I say, no, it isn't. It's our volunteers are our most important asset. It's our people who serve on these boards. Which sort of brings me to charter review and combining groups and things that, uh, takes the individual voices away from the people. So the more people you can get to speak and volunteer and let their voices be heard, the more important it's gonna be for the town. But tonight, I, which is now no longer the agenda item, is the vote on the open space on the quarter of Firetown and Owens Brook. And perhaps if you don't totally dismiss it, and someday it comes back to this board, I hope everybody will have the time to re-watch the tape of August 12th of Board of Select meeting. Pay close attention to the comments in public audience, how this item was presented, both the manner and justification for my town manager in a desire to streamline the process. It was clearly stated this was a test case. It was clearly stated, it was not decided to go through open space. I've watched this tape about four times in the last week. Every effort was made to avoid calling it open space. Despite the fact it was designated, it was on every town map as open space. It was called, well, it wasn't designated open space. There is no such thing as designated open space. It was clearly stated that the town staff was negotiating price, terms, and conditions with adjacent neighbors. Adjacent neighbors came to the open space meeting. He said he's never been contacted. He says the first thing he saw was a sign went up. And then he thought, well, maybe that's how you negotiate once the hearing sign went up. It went to planning as a municipal approval. I learned last week, fifty dollars a year is what we're earning from getting this back on the tax roll. So what I say to you is, we demand compliance with our policies. We demand, I don't know, I guess I wanna say diligence in believing what we're told, transparency in how we're doing things. And I guess I'm also saying, I thank you for the job you do. And I ask you to please keep doing your job representing the people that feel like you do represent.
Thank you. Okay, um, do we have anyone else here for public audience? Oh, the retiree in the front row.
Semi-retired.
Okay.
Oh, semi-now.
Two. We're tak- I told Jill and we're taking back all we said on our retirement night.
And like eulogy.
Okay. Now, five minutes, Joan. Oops.
Are you all ready?
Okay.
You want to take a new picture now?
Let's go.
Oh, okay, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to share with the Board of Selectmen the reasoning behind my return to duty. After cataract surgery, I filled a new prescription with new lenses. As I found out later, there are different qualities of lenses that are purchased. The lens I received was a low-quality lens that deteriorated my vision resulting in diminished quality of life. After several consultations, I purchased glasses with a high-quality lens and smaller lenses, eliminating all the distortions. Now that my quality of life has returned to normal, I can continue my self-appointed task of making Simsbury a town of interest to the public. Recently, there was an article in the Simsbury, about Simsbury paying Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association two hundred thousand dollars to enhance their failed business. Executive Director Karen Stewart receives a salary of a hundred thirty-five thousand, one forty-eight. Town Manager Mark Nelson stated in an article in the Middletown Press that the model for ambulance service does not work, although the town manager of Avon, Brandon Robinson, stated, quote, "His town is satisfied with the longstanding relationship with AMR." This is no cost, there is no cost to the town, and we've been pleased with the service. In fact, we just renewed for another term. The contract with SVAA states in the future, funding is not appropriated, if the, if the funding is not appropriate, is, in the event funding is not appropriated, the agreement shall terminate. I would like to urge the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance to immediately remove the funding from the SVAA at the cost of five hundred thousand dollars over four years, starting with two hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget. Town Manager Mark Nelson stated his former employee, the city of Poughkeepsie, New York, was compelled to suddenly unexpectedly budget five hundred thousand dollars a year when his local ambulance company failed. The median household income in Simsbury is a hundred twenty-three thousand, four thirty-five, and the median household income in Poughkeepsie is five fifty-three thousand, eight seventy-five. Town Manager Mark Nelson should not use Poughkeepsie as a model for Simsbury since we have our own goals and policies, preservation of open space and maintaining our quality of life while maintaining the character of Simsbury. The Board of Selectmen signed a contract with the Simsbury Performing Arts Center for fifteen years. The SPAC pays the town twenty-five hundred per season until two twenty-eight, when the fee is increased to seventy-five hundred per season. The fee is paid to the town, it's still sub rights to the town-owned property, the Simsbury Meadows, the Iron Horse Boulevard. It appears that this contract is a sweetheart deal that creates an undue burden on the community with increased traffic and reduced parking for the business establishment. There is nothing in the SPAC contract that addresses transparency with access to all board meetings required for the public to attend, as does the SVAA contract. The SPAC contract should be held to the same standards as SVAA. I would like to urge the Board of Selectmen to vote no on purchasing the Simscroft Echo Building that was in, uh, Village Road for special education. The Board of Education has once again rushed to judgment without studying the complete financial consequences of this purchase and other alternatives to delivery of service to special education students. Many years ago, the Board of Education proposed a new high school with a large campus for a hundred million dollars in lieu of renovating the high school for twenty-eight million. After Board Council had a meeting with the Board of Finance and told them if this project was to be ratified, there could be no capital projects for many years. The results led to the renovation of the high school that serves the community and the students very well at twenty-eight million dollars. Recently, the Board of Education renovated Henry James Junior High for a cost of twenty-three point nine million. There's a proposal for the Board of Education to redistrict the schools with sixth grade going to Henry James. There will be additional costs for redistricting due to the rush to judgment for the renovation of the junior high without adequately reviewing the additional costs. Placing the sixth grade in the junior high leaves room for reconfigurations of schools with grades K to two in two schools and grades three to five in two other buildings, leaving an empty building for other uses. The state is reviewing a model for regionalizing special education as shared resources and cost sharing. The failed to track record of the Board of Education and their rush to judgment has been costly to the burden of the taxpayer. The purchase of the Simscroft Echo Building will become another costly failed project by the Board of Education. This purchase should be removed from capital project. All my comments we posted on Simsbury Pat and Twitter at Joan Cohen, I did it within five minutes.
Thank you. Gotta make up for lost time.
I have extra time, I can donate to someone.
Okay, no, and with anybody else here for public audience? Okay, great. So, we're gonna move into the presentation portion of our program. And, um, we're going to, um, honor, um, Chris Noble for her thirty years of volunteering at Simsbury Community Media. And to kick this off, I would like to invite up prior first select woman, Mary Glassman, and ask her if she's missing all of this as she gets to sit out there.
Yes, I'm very, I'm missing it.
Okay, so you wanna come on up, Mary?
Um, okay.
Oh, Dawn, you're gonna come up too?
We're all gonna come up.
Okay.
What about you, Kevin?
Yeah.
You're part of our board.
I'm gonna invite the board and introduce them.
Oh, 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 celebrate from here.
My name's not called John, but, you know, Simsbury Community, Community Media, formerly SCTV. This is Donna Senate, our treasurer. Karen Handville, former station manager, she ran the station for twenty-five years. Mary, who most of you know, is still working with us as vice president, she was president prior to me. And I'd like Chris Noble to come up. Steve, would you join us, please? Would you, would you join us? This is Chris's husband, Steve, who also volunteered with us for many years.
Not you, Joan.
And, and, uh,
Steve, my husband.
Steve Noble. And, uh, Kevin Beal's a member of our board also, and you can say, you can. If you'd like, yeah, come on up.
Yes, sir.
Good, come on, Kevin.
So, I'll go first. I just wanna tell you, uh, it, thank you for giving us the opportunity to honor one of our own here tonight. Uh, thank you, Selectmen, and, uh, Chris Noble, uh, it's been just a, it, we're fortunate to have people like Chris, uh, in our community, people who are willing to serve. And she's been involved with SCTV for thirty years, uh, you know, shortly after the, the operation got started. She's covered countless meetings in this building with Steve. Uh, her preference has always been the Board of Ed, 'cause she's a former teacher. She taught at Terriffill School and Central School. And, uh, and she's been on, and, and she's done, she started out doing camera work. She's done vision mixing and directing. And she's been on the board, we were trying to figure it out, 'cause she's been on the board longer than any of us have been around, and she can't remember. And, uh, a year ago, she, uh, she said, you know, I'm ready to retire. I said, well, it's kind of a tough time for us, can you stick around a little longer? And she stayed. And, uh, right through, she kept the minutes on all of our meetings right through, uh, September of this year. And then she reached out again and said, you know, I'm turning ninety in November. I think it's, I think it's time. So reluctantly, we, we're gonna let her go, but we're honoring her tonight for her service to the community. And, uh, Mary, would, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I think we have a plaque.
Right there, Mary, next to you, right in the box.
We have a plaque that came out really nice, and, uh, when you're done with it, we'd like to permanently hang it up in our studio so that others can be inspired to serve as you serve.
Can you guys, we'll take a picture?
Beautiful, thank you so much.
Of the, it says, uh, to Chris Noble for over thirty years of dedicated volunteer service to Simsbury Community Media. Your passion, commitment, and unwavering support have enriched our community and inspired all who have had the privilege to work with you.
Mary, will you look this way?
Thank you so much, Mary. Thank you, everybody, that's so special.
We, we also have a recognition that I would like to read, if that's okay. Um, in recognition of Marilyn, which I never knew your name, was Marilyn Chris Noble, for thirty years of service, uh, whereas for the last thirty years, Marilyn Chris Noble has been a regular presence supporting SCM, formerly known as SCTV, in many roles since she started in the nineteen nineties and has the most amount of tenure of the SCM Board of Directors, past and present. And whereas Chris served on the board and volunteered during the days of analog recording of community programs and capturing government meetings on tape. And whereas with her husband, Steve, they worked together to cover government meetings by separately handing the audio and video portions to make sure the meetings were preserved for the public. And whereas Chris has been the SCM Board Secretary for many years, capturing and documenting the discussions and decisions of the board so that reliable minutes were available and retained. And whereas Chris has helped plan many events supporting SCM volunteers and has worked on other committees in town in which she has helped inspire others to volunteer for community service. Now therefore be it resolved that I, First Selectmen, oh, doesn't say Wendy Maxey this, but we'll be filling a blank, on behalf of the town of Simsbury hereby recognize the devoted volunteerism and community spirit of Chris Noble to Simsbury Community, Community Media for all the work she has done to ensure the people of Simsbury are kept up to date on information versus via community television. So thank you, we, we couldn't do this job without you guys preserving these meetings and so that people could see what's going on and that there's transparency to the public. So thank you very much. We just hand this over. Th- thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Do you have any closing remarks about, um, I'll just say some closing remarks.
Okay, good.
So, thank you, Wendy and, uh, the board for giving us the opportunity so the public could see, um, how their government is covered because of volunteers like Chris and Steve. And, uh, we are always looking for volunteers. Uh, we thank the town for their support to enable us to, uh, present this information. And just, Christie, do you wanna say anything?
I do. Just thank you so much for taking your time to, to honor me like this, it's very special for me. And I do have some words for S, for S, SCTV. Uh, if you're watching this, contribute, we need your money. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris.
Kevin, do you wanna add a couple words?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say that I had a tough job, uh, at the request of the, uh, the past president to, to serve as a nominating chair, and I had to be one of the people asking Chris if she'd be willing to serve again. And it's just been a pleasure to, uh, get to know you and to, uh, be inspired by your long tenure of service. I think it takes a lot to give of yourself your time, which is your most valuable asset, and you've done that for so long. So thank you, on behalf of all of us on the board for Simsbury Community Media and the entire town of Simsbury. Chris, what a leader, thank you.
All the years of teaching.
Almost worth it, you know?
Alright.
Chris, congrats.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Um, thank you guys for coming. So, the, the next item is the First Selectmen's report, and I, I did wanna just address, um, the, the Firetown law, the, the open sale space is not.
Chair, if I, do you, do you need to modify the agenda to?
Uh, I could do it after, but if you wanted to, I was gonna do it if we had moved the first part, but you got it on tap for me?
I, 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 I'll make a motion to modify the agenda
Okay, you wanna do it now?
Pursuant to General Statute, Section 1206B, uh, for an executive session to discuss a legal matter.
Second. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have an executive session added at the end of the meeting, so we need to.
It's only so long to get modified.
If you could add a second, um, agenda topic for potential action on that executive session.
Oh, yeah, true, okay.
Um,
Friendly amendment, yeah.
So, um, I should move to add an action item to, uh, regarding the, um, matter in executive session.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have an executive session and a potential action item after the executive session. Okay, back to First Selectmen's report, and the person that I was, so I, I just wanted to address, um, the Firetown law is not on tonight's agenda, um, you know, the progression would have been here. The open space communications is attached, um, I serve as open space chair. I, I abstained from the vote on it, but I was, I participated in the conversation. Um, so there, so what we hope to do is, um, you know, we've covered all the twenty-one dash eight bases for this piece of land. We're going to make sure that we check the boxes and questions that have been asked along the way, including the process for the bidding and how it was opened. Also, one thing that the town attorney is working on is what the, what you can do with the property, you know, um, if you, if there's restrictions on the property and things like that. So until we get all that information and also see what other pieces of property are part of this conglomeration, we are just gonna leave it off the agenda until we have all that as a package. Okay? Um, so, uh, the other thing, the first thing I wanna do, I should have done this first, is we have ten, we have, um, three employees that are celebrating ten years of service. Ed Schwench, Schwanki, I'm sorry, Ed, from Water Pollution Control Engineering Inspection is not here tonight, but he has served the town of Simsbury for ten years. Now Michelle Abbott can come up here. Michelle has served ten years as a crossing guard. Where are you, where are you a crossing guard?
At Squadron Line.
Okay, that's a great job. So, we have a proclamation, a certificate of appreciation from you, so we'd like to thank you for your service from all of us on the board.
Thank you.
I, I will add that she's been a crossing guard and raised to everybody as they go to school, and everybody loves her as a crossing guard.
That's true.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the, the, the next one is for, you know, it's closer to my heart, no offense, Michelle, like, I don't, I didn't have a kid at Squadron, out of you. So I didn't see you, see you safe.
Well, with the mom after ten years, but.
Whatever, I shouldn't have said that. Um, so Brian is our golf course superintendent, and those of us that, you know, love Simsbury Farms or play golf up there, we know how hard Brian works. So Brian, ten years with the town, we hope you'll continue for ten more.
Will do.
Um, 'cause we love the job that you have.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, thanks a lot.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I can remember, I'm a little relaxed tonight, it's our last meeting of the year for the Board of Selectmen. Um, that, the flag raising, what was the date of the flag raising out from? Was it before, oh, it was before our last meeting? So I've already mentioned that, so I'm not gonna mention that here. Um, I wanna thank everybody involved in Simsbury Celebrates, that was two weeks ago already? A week ago. Uh, it was really, you know, the classic event, it was a little cold that night, but usually, everybody has a great time. Um, an announcement I'd like to make is the tri-board meeting is Wednesday night at seven o'clock. It's always a fun time, 'cause the tri-board is the Board of Ed, Board of Finance, and our board talking about the upcoming budget. Seven o'clock, is it at the library? Library? Yep, at the library. One other thing I wanna mention is that, um, the Board of Ed, the Two Farms Village discussions that we've had about purchasing a building to help offset some of the special ed costs, they will be doing their presentation on this program tomorrow night at the Board of Ed meeting. Um, so I'm, just wanna make people aware that they can go to that meeting to hear more about the detail behind the project, which we've actually presented, but they will, you can, they'll be there to do that. So, um, that, and then the other thing I wanna just add is, um, as, as everybody knows, we have, we are kicking off the charter revision process, which is a pretty serious project for the town to engage in. Um, and we've, as we've done, we've selected people, and that meeting is starting, um, they're starting tomorrow night, but just be aware that there will be, they're required to have a public hearing and that everybody should pay attention and know when that is, and we'll keep you guys posted so that you can go and share any concerns or comments you have about that charter process, so that it's open to the public. And with that, I am done, and I'm going to turn it over to our town manager, Mark Nelson.
Thanks, Wendy, thanks, Chair, and good evening, everybody. Wendy actually mentioned all of the things I was gonna mention, except one, uh, which, uh, this issue came up in public comment, but wanna remind the public that the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association is holding their annual meeting uh, tomorrow, uh, December tenth at seven PM. Uh, it's located at their headquarters at Four Old Mill Lane here in Simsbury. Why is that important? Um, this board recently unanimously approved, uh, a new, uh, agreement and relationship with the SVAA, and as part of that new memorandum with them, their, uh, annual meeting is open to the public, and public will be, uh, asked, if they have comments, they can also speak at that, and that's a, uh, change from the prior, uh, practice. Also, just wanna take a moment, um, to, uh, point a personal privilege and thank all of our many town employees as we get into this holiday season. Uh, I see Kristen is here with us, and the fine job that she's doing in social services particularly is important this time of year. Uh, I wanna thank our Board of Selectmen members, particularly our First Selectmen, uh, Wendy, and, and, uh, everybody sitting up here for your, uh, making me feel welcome earlier this year, uh, as your new town manager. And I wanna thank you all, and, uh, I'll thank the staff too for the wonderful support uh, that's allowed us to get so much done this year. So thank you very much, like to wish, uh, everybody a happy holiday, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, so you're done?
I am done.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna start, yeah, I know, I'm gonna start down with Kevin for any reports, liaison or other?
I have no reports at this time.
Okay, Diana?
Um, I have a few. Uh, Board of Ed had a lot of Merlin Revan Cutting, um, very excited to have that project done. And to note that the Simsbury High School Musical will be Anastasia, and it's going to be very exciting to see, opening on January thirty-first through February ninth, um, for Culture Parks and Rec. Uh, they approved their twenty twenty-five fee schedule for both the pool passes as well as golf fees. Um, they have looked at, uh, different things for season pass holders for the pool, and there's some added benefits. And there's some added benefits if you become a family season pass holder versus paying, you know, so that you you don't have to buy bracelets. I mean, uh pay to go to the special events where if you don't have season pass, you have to pay to go to a certain special event to get a bracelet. Um again, the long term clubhouse facility committee is still exploring, um you know, what they want to do with that. And on December twenty third, there is holiday skate and share from twelve thirty to two thirty. Um I can uh send you the flyer about that because I forgot to print it and we can pass it around, but that's always a fun time. Um for the uh the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. Uh they are still having their executives director search and I know that they had some interviews over this uh past week. Um June twenty seventh is the first date of the first H S O concert. Um it will not be the fourth of July concert because uh that will be the following week and the two thousand twenty five planning is underway. For aging and disability, sensory Santa event is this Saturday, uh the fourteenth from one to five at the Simsbury Public Library is extremely popular event. And we have um a over almost sixty five participants signed up. Um and that does not include their families and parents who will be attending as well. We have a new Santa this year, we're very excited and we have two partner, community partners that are helping us. Um I did want to talk about this blue envelope pro- program that our Simsbury Police Department is has adopted. And what this is, is this, and they have one, there's a green envelope as well, but I have the blue envelope with me. This is for uh drivers who are on the autism spectrum, who have passed their driver's test and often gone through um Easter seals for. Uh uh driver's education. But this is what the the drivers with autism should keep in their glove compartment, so I want the community to know that these are available at the police department. But if you have autism or you are hearing impaired, you can get a green one and you keep your documents in here. So that's why it says important papers on there. So when, if you are pulled over or there's a traffic incident or an accident. And you pull this out, the police officers will recognize this right away as you are a driver who is on the autism spectrum or who may be hard of hearing. And um they have been trained on this and so they will understand the communication maybe uh a little, look a little different. And we don't want to have any, you know, any kind of incidences with drivers who may be on the autism spectrum and may not. Um under those stressful circumstances know how to um. Uh um communicate effectively um as as other drivers may. So I think this is a really good program and helping to keep our officers and our community safe. Um if you have any questions, see the police department or you can contact me. On four tw- on four nine, there will be a program on planning for your special needs child. And as I mentioned, but now we have an official flyer on one sixteen. We are, uh Parks and Rec is starting a um my squad, oh no, this is the wrong flyer, sorry. Um we're doing a social sparks club um for young adults with disabilities. It's a social club that is starting through Parks and Rec uh for um young adults twenty one and older who have disabilities, who often don't have social outlets. So that is starting. Um nothing on youth service advisory boarding, we're meeting this Monday and fair rent, we don't have anything luckily. And uh you have safety, we're meeting next Thursday.
Okay, Steve, you wanna go?
Yeah. Um economic.
Di- wait, Diana, you're not allowed to mention any dates that you mentioned tonight between now and then. Like the four nine, the June, like we're pre, we're.
Um.
Yeah, I was just, I was kind of a joke.
I will mention them later.
Okay, like close.
I will not mention them again. They just were on agendas recently, so I just mentioned them now.
Okay, close. That's okay, and I was, I was just joking, so don't think it's.
Yes, I will not mention them every month at practice.
Okay, okay.
You may now go, Steve.
Steve, sorry, sorry.
The Economic Development Commission will be meeting in July. No, I'm just. I'm sorry. The E D C recently had a meeting. Uh we were fortunate to meet with Greg Nanny of Prospect Properties. Wagner Building demolition is done as many know. The foundations will be poured over the winter, asphalt in the spring and the buildings will be done of June of twenty twenty five. The tenant build outs will be completed several months after that. Um to the rear of that, the strip mall, no tenants have been found yet, but it will be completed as soon as it is allowed uh with that. The E D C will also be holding another meeting tomorrow as they continue defining their pillars of engagement for themselves. Simsbury Main Street Partnership met last week as well. They reviewed their Black Friday Small Business Saturday gift card event. It was incredibly successful with twenty one Simsbury businesses participating, keeping well over ten thousand dollars within the Simsbury economy. Simsbury Main Street Partnership has also created their very, our very own Simsbury gift card, which will be accepted at participating Simsbury businesses. It's one gift card for all of the Simsbury businesses. This too will keep thousands of dollars in our local club um economy and make a great gift for a multitude of reasons, reasons. The gift cards will be promoted in early twenty twenty five as they're finalizing the details. The find your space in Simsbury dot com website is successful and in fact has be. The executive director has begun meeting with prospective business owners that found spaces on the site and will be bringing their businesses to the Simsbury economy. Simsbury Celebrates had another successful year. Simsbury Main Street is proud to sit on the planning committee for that event. They want me to also thank the organizations that come together to keep the free event alive as well as Simsbury Parks and Rec. And in particular, Tara Willerup, who is the chair for this event. Roy Roy Bazzano and Sarah Nielsen continue to bring, work on bringing wifi to downtown. They receive an est- they received an estimate for the performing arts center area. But are awaiting a full estimate as well as competitive bids and will bring that to us as soon as possible. That was it.
Thank you.
Um Heather?
Um so I just have um that at the eleven twenty six planning meeting. Um the commission gave unanimous positive eight twenty four report and referral back to our board on the potential acquisition of two farms. Village Road is being consistent with the P O C D. Um and then, oh, I hit the ambulance meeting for tomorrow. Um and also that public safety will be meeting December nineteenth next.
Will you give enough speed on personnel or anything?
Oh, you too.
Okay. Okay. Curtis?
Um we had a um juvenile review board meeting today. Uh that went well. Um. The police commission, the meeting was moved to the sixteenth and it's, they said it's a highlight that um the town website is not updated to reflect this. That's one of the other reasons why we need to update the town's website. Um because if you want to track meetings, it's hard to see, you use a calendar, it doesn't always get updated. Um zoning commission met on the second. Um there are some draft changes for um zoning regulations. Um I guess it's gonna leave it, it their draft changes, so they're, they haven't really pushed it through. Um and that's all I have, yeah.
That they're keeping the public hearing open?
Okay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Oh, keep it public, yeah, sorry.
Okay, and when's the next meeting?
Uh that's the once again.
Sixteenth.
December sixteenth.
Sixteenth, the vote is sixteenth.
Okay, oh, thank you, okay.
Sixteen, voting, yeah.
Okay, I'll just give a couple quick updates. Personnel subcommittee, we have a meeting next week. And one of the things that we're looking at is um performance management, um some tools to, first of all, to do our town managers' performance review. To have more of an automated tool. We're currently using a um you know, ho- homemade version. And then potentially maybe that's something we could roll out um going forward. And then in the the finance subcommittee, um. We've been ranking, we did our capital rankings, we got input from the Board of Selectmen, we had some really good conversations today where to go next with this. So um it's just good conversation, I thought, earlier. And um with that, I do want to ask um about the consent agenda. There's not much to move off. But I was gonna ask if we can move item C from selectman action and then the two appointments. One is to the youth services board and then we have a reappointment of Jenna Caulfield to the police commission and Michael Jennings to aging and disability. Um so people agree with that?
So much.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Aye. Okay, and then I, Kevin, you, I mean, you didn't mention the sustainability project, but they're, they're gonna come to us next. Meeting with um a a proposal to do uh another solar and energy project that they've been working with. Um and um I guess, I don't know if it's a vendor or whatever it is. So just a heads up, um they asked to potentially have it on tonight, but we didn't have the information to share with the board. So I figured everybody would want to to know what's going on there. So with that, let's get into selectman action. Uh the first item we have is to revise thirty two thirty six Iron Horse Boulevard uh development easement. This is where, what was Barbara Cove, right? Do you want to talk, Board? Happy to have somebody talk.
It was Barbara Cove.
Yeah, I didn't know they changed the name.
Let's put it on.
Is now um, I don't know what it's called, luminary, it seems very.
Yeah.
Um so the developer is is asking, um is requesting the Board of Selectmen to abandon an existing access easement that runs essentially through the middle of the property. Um and they are asking instead of that to accept a new public access easement for public access around the site. The um after talking to to Tom Roy, we have um, we understand that the original easement was for a, a very old, old, old access to. What was a wastewater lagoon near the farm, which remember, when I say old, like sixty years ago. Um that has long been abandoned and long been re.
It's still in my timeframe.
Long been returned, long, long been returned to the natural environment and the wetlands and those kinds of things. So so town doesn't really need access to any facilities back there. Um we needed to get back there. We do have access really through our own property at the back.
Okay.
Um so that that language, the easement language is is in one document. That document is your, has been reviewed by town attorney Dick Griseno um and and staff, the town, uh the planning director, town engineer and town attorney recommended approval of the easement. Document and language.
Okay, uh does the board have questions on this?
I have a question. Um maybe it's for Bob. Um but perhaps George or Mark. Are there any potential legal liabilities or um you know, that are associated with the new access point or changing this?
No, I, so s- so as I understand it, we we we're not, we're not really giving up any rights that we didn't previously have. So they've, they've offered a public access easement, so um actually I think it ensures a a better liability for us to access the property for fire or for ambulance or any of those kinds of things. That way we have a clear public access in and throughout the um, you know, what'll be the the access aisles and the drive aisles for the apartment complex. So I think, I I mean, I I'll have Bob answer that better, but I I think that's the answer. I don't think there's, I think it improves our 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 liability standing by having that easement in agreement.
Okay.
And there isn't anything, are there any environmental concerns or impacts on wastewater, the lagoons, the river?
No, I, you know, Tom and I, you know, we looked into it, I mean, it could sixty or seventy years ago, these are, so we don't believe there's any liability. Again, long been returned to to what is natural. They're just wetlands now.
I have a question, actually sti- sticking with um, what if someone slips and falls and we have the easement? Does it shift any of the burden onto the town?
No, because the easement is for public safety purposes and it's, the easement will now run through the roadways of the new development. So if someone were to slip and fall on roadways of development and the town was not involved in any way, we don't by virtue of the easement pick up.
Fair enough. Thank you for the clarification.
If we, if we put a fire truck out there, we run somebody over and then.
Thanks Bob for that happy holiday energy.
You asked an attorney a question, Stephen.
Um okay, so I'm gonna read the motion. Um I ask for a motion effective December ninth twenty twenty four to quit claim the town's interest in the existing easement shown on the boundary survey. Dated August twenty fifth twenty twenty one for thirty two twenty six Iron Horse Boulevard. And accept the dedication of a new public access easement from thirty two twenty six Iron Horse L L C. Or its successor in the location as depicted on the map attached to this motion in a form of access easement to be approved by the town attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Uh the next item is the uh approval of the Simsbury Food Pantry and Cheese Day Program License Agreement. Um I don't know if you guys want to talk about Phyllis and or update us on this project and then we'll see if there's questions.
Sure. Do you want me to come up or something?
Uh whatever, you can say, it's up to you.
Come on up.
Come on up. From the next section of the first selectman agenda.
Um I think everybody knows me, but for the audience, I'm Kristen Formanak. I'm the Director of Community and Social Services. Um we were notified, uh we being uh town of Simsbury and Social Services Food Pantry. Uh we were notified late in the summer that our current location where our food pantry is located is going to be experiencing a holy closure. Um and we were given notice that the church is going to be closed and that we needed to relocate um by the. Uh our, our end of our agreement will be the end of this year and that we need to relocate um before the end of the first month of next year. Uh so we, town staff started looking for a new location. Um first started looking at faith based organizations to see if we could find a good fit. Um and we found a really good fit with First Church. Um so we're excited that we're going to be uh moving there at the turn of the year. Uh we uh spent some time at the property with them. We visited it more than twice to make sure that it's a good fit for us. Um and that it will work to serve our purposes and we're very confident that it will. Uh so we will be rolling out that information to our cheese day participants tomorrow. Uh everyone will have information on where to go for the next distribution. Uh and we will be planning to move with the assistance of Public Works, um like I said, after the turn of the year. And our first official distribution from the new location will be in February. We will have a modified distribution in January at Eno for our participants, uh but we won't be up and running for a full cheese day until February.
Okay.
I would just like to add that acknowledge the hard work that um Kristen's social services team did. They they took a huge underlifting of kind of finding um where to go. Um and it was stressful at times, I'm sure. But with what she identified, it can't be a better fit.
And I I know we have a question on the board, so I'm gonna turn it over to Diana.
So I do have a question. Um the term, it says in the l- the license agreement that the term of the agreement shall begin January first twenty twenty five. And shall automatically terminate upon the earlier of June thirtieth twenty twenty five or receipt of license. See have a notice from the licensor that it is revoking the license. Why are we only looking at a six month license agreement rather than a full year? Um when first of all distributing to those families in need, um you know, we would want continuation of services. Um and we wouldn't want a disruption, but also for the benefit of First Church, if they're going through all this work to open up a space. And at a cost to them potentially, why are we only looking at a six month lease?
So really good question. Um and the simple answer was that when I drafted it, I was making it in line with our other um leases and contracts that are. Uh would be going on the budget cycle, so it'll be in line with the fiscal year. Um but I do have verbal and written permitment from First Church that they absolutely want us to stay past that June thirtieth.
Right.
It's not even on their mind to not re-sign. Um and Tom and I discussed it and we're going to look to either do a three or a five year agreement following that, um of which they're absolutely in agreement with. So I I understand your concern, I hear your concern, uh but I don't think that we need to worry about it. Uh we did have conversations with First Church, actually directly along those lines. They want to get clearance from us also, that if they're going through all of this work to um move some of their uh property within the building, that we intend to stay. So um I, to be honest with you, if I have to move in June, I'll be like Mark. So I I don't think that that's um should be any concern at all for us.
I I had the same question though, but I I actually don't think it's responsible for us to approve it for only six months. If we're, if they're willing to accept it for at least a year, I think that it's responsible to do it for a year unless you can tell me a compelling reason why we shouldn't do it for at least one year.
I.
I would say, yeah, as Chris mentioned, we reached out to them ear- later, earlier this afternoon and uh made sure that they were okay for multi-year. So if you would like to amend it to a multi-year, um they're okay with that too and we can do that now.
I I I agree with Kevin that it's it's irresponsible to only do a six month lease, if unless there is some compelling reason.
I I'm fine with adjusting the lease. What do you guys think is reasonable to have?
Unless the staff objects, I'd like two years. Is is that okay?
Yeah, so.
Does the board approve?
Sure, would it be, just to clarify, I forgot to bring up, I'm sorry, would you want it to be two years, um?
Or like two and a half, half?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, two and a half, two and a half.
Two and a half, two and a half.
Two and a half to get onto the.
Thank you, and that'll keep us on the um fiscal cycle.
Sounds good to me.
So June thirtieth twenty twenty six, twenty seven?
Seven.
Two and a half, got it, twenty seven.
And and then uh just to tap, so we can make that, add that to the um change. And then the the fees and everything, they're gonna, they'll stay the same for this period, that's also been accounted for if we extend it, right?
Yeah, so it's an annual fee. Um and I don't anticipate that they would be going up and it's actually a lower cost than our previous lease.
That was my next question.
Yeah, it's it's uh I think it was a hundred seventy dollars less than our previous lease.
It's funded through the Eno trusts.
Okay, I think that's what I was gonna ask you.
Yep.
Okay, so the funding will stay the same and we'll move the um or the date to twenty twenty seven?
Sounds good. I'll make that change tomorrow and send it back over to the church.
Okay, okay. Okay, so I I'll ask for a motion effective December.
I I have, I have, uh they're coming.
Oh. Okay, sure.
So there's um a part in section C. So there's um a part in section C where it talks about the grant of the license is subject to the following conditions and that they'll have the I have no, just full disclosure, I have no problem with First Church, I think this is a a friendly agreement, I just wanna, you know, if we're gonna sign it, it should be right. Um uh they'll have the final decision on the location and can move it. I I just think it would be appropriate for us to add at the end of that in C one, that mutual agreement of the parties, like we're gonna agree to stay there. It's in room two O eight, you know, they wanna make sure that they have some flexibility, but it it should I I think it's appropriate that we have a a say in that matter and it's not gonna move from day to day or week to week.
Or every six months.
Well, yeah, whatever it is, so if that's okay with everybody else and you think it's okay with First Church's and mutual consent of the parties for C one.
Yeah. Okay, and I'll just check maybe with you Tom on what exact language you would wanna put in that, so it'll be also with Bob.
To move us, so so this, so sorry, this this insinuates they could move us from Palmer Hall to somewhere else, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean in in this here and they had do have classrooms and other spots.
Okay.
I have no problem with their needing to un- you know, be flexible and and have swing space or whatever else.
Oh, that.
But I think the same burden would be as if we're asking them to move across the street to another room in the building. So I think it's okay that we have a say in the matter of whether or not it's okay.
Okay.
So it would be maybe adding, you know, um as agreeable to both parties.
Right. Yeah, the license is very common.
There's similar language in the other part of the agreement too that you could copy.
Yeah.
And with like reasonable notification.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we can get to a yes on this. There's also a spot in the uh in the insurance part where it says that the licensee will name licenser as an additional assured, it's very standard. Um but not necessarily outside of when we're actually taking occupancy there, this is only partially occupied. And so I'd like language that reflects the fact that uh when we're there, uh they're additionally assured.
But what number was that Kevin, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's in section five.
That.
Yep.
It's in the second paragraph under the the lettered items.
Okay.
So I would I would say that if you add only during operating hours.
Right, if somebody is there like we're in um Saturday for some special event, it's not a cheese day, we're not there.
Right, I just.
Yeah, but staffs can be there prior to operating hours.
Uh so I what would do you the appropriate language you'd use once?
Right, because we are there off hours um working and stocking, like for example, uh Rachel started her day this morning at Food Pantry
Hmm.
and she was there for about two hours. And we wouldn't be able to spell out when that would be in here, so it would be including hours that staff and volunteers may be working.
You can leave the room, the child.
I'm I'm willing to you withdraw for the purposes of of uh continuing the agreement. I just think that something in there jumps out at me, especially because it's regarding an insurance policy and that's when stuff can go wonky. There is an attorney in the room, but I I don't know.
Yeah.
If I if I could, then you would just amend the motion and and we would ask the town attorney to help us with that sentence, I I certainly understand your point.
If that's acceptable to everybody else and you can pass this without, you know, knowing the exact language, I'm okay with that.
No chance. Yep.
I'm fine with that.
Good.
Everybody agree with that?
Great, thank you Wendy.
Don't know if I can remember all the thing that we just said, but.
Thank you. That's fine.
On to.
Well, you're changing the term to uh into thirty two uh twenty seven and and to amend that's uh section that uh selectman Beal mentioned uh with the help of the town attorney.
The term. Okay.
And C.
So it's.
And C.
C.
And.
Yep.
The location.
Beal.
Yeah, it's.
So I'll just summarize.
C one and five A.
And five A.
Five A and the term, I don't know where the terms.
Something to do mutual consent.
Okay, I can ask for a motion, December ninth twenty twenty four, to approve the license agreement with the First Church of Christ Simsbury it with changes related to the term, section C one on the location and to include the town attorney with regard to the insurance clause. Um and this is regarding the housing of the Simsbury Food Pantry and Cheese Day program and to authorize town manager Mark Nelson to execute the agreement.
So much.
Any more discussion?
I'll just, full disclosure, I have attended First Church, but I don't think it's a conflict for me to vote on this.
Yeah, I don't think so. Okay, so thank you for sharing.
Friendly friendly amendment, friendly amendment.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you, and we will plan to have a ribbon cutting and make sure that we invite you all over to see the new space.
That's great, thank you for waiting here Wendy.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just know how we can.
Well done. Okay, wait, this is seven o'clock, let's see how long we can keep.
Thank you.
I'll try my best Wendy.
No, I'm not in I'm not in any hurry, I'm just happy we're here at seven, right? Okay, so now we get to the big item on the agenda. Um so this is to approve recommendations to the charter revision commission, so I'm gonna give my spiel and I'm gonna ask Bob probably to weigh in on a few things. So included in this package, um I wrote a letter to the charter revision commission um with my my a couple of items. And in that letter, I include the proposed recommendations from this board that was taken from everyone who submitted them and consolidated by our town attorney for inclusion here. Um and then so we can look those over and and make sure that that's what we wanna forward to the board because it should be consensual and not just going offs in my opinion. And then um we can talk, there's also a letter here, um Mark provided or Bob also shared a list of administrative off i- items from the town, which I felt we weren't reviewing or sanctioning. So if we were going to forward them, that Bob um that Mark could present them in a letter and we can see if we wanna also include that to push forward. Um so with that, I do you want to say anything before? Because I we'll we'll go through the items and make sure that we're good with the items as they're listed here um and as presented by the board and consolidated. And then we can talk about um what's in Mark's letter if anyone wants it.
Yeah, this this list um Wendy mentioned was generated by the first draft of the list, which I review all saw, was generated by me taking all of the comments I received through emails from all of you who else does communication, and I simply put them on a single list without doing any editorial changes whatsoever. And then I worked with Wendy sort of combine like items because it I don't think it was a good idea to send the charter revision commission thirty five items. Many of which were somewhat different from each other, but I also didn't think it was my role to winnow down that list or your. So what you have in front of you is a distillation of the original group of items in combination of like items uh for your consideration. Keeping in mind that the statute um authorizes the board of selectmen to make recommendations to the commission, but doesn't require it. Secondly, the commission is free to take up the items or not. Um and it all comes back to you as a board of selectmen in the form of a preliminary report from the commission in the letter Wendy submitted, like it back um by August. And at that time, the board of selectmen can approve the report, reject the report or approve the several provisions under the report that statute says. In other words, if there's eight recommendations, you could say we like the first four, but we don't like the last four. So this is the start of a process, it's also not an exclusive list. If you a month from now you say, oh, you know, we forgot, we want the charter revision commission to look at this as well.
Okay.
You have the right to do that as well.
And and just the other thing we did ask, well, I think the best thing would be to just go through the list and make sure that this is what we wanna pass along.
Yeah, go through that.
Sure, I just have a clarifying question too, you had mentioned about being able to um to accept parts of it. For some reason I had um come to the understanding that we have the responsibility to accept it in whole or not. Um but that's your interpretation is that we can uh parse it.
Absolutely, the the three choices are accept the whole thing, reject the whole thing, or accept items one through four, reject items five through eight.
Okay.
Can we also send it back to the commission if we feel that we need?
You can also send it back to the commission.
I agree. I'm surprised.
And if you reject items five through eight, there's a petition process in the statute that the public can say, we don't want you to reject items five through eight and petition it onto the um onto the ballot referendum.
And.
If it goes, oh sorry, oh if it goes back, are we still coming in sixteen months?
Go ahead.
That's not until they come back to us.
Yes.
So no matter what, if you go back and forth, it's sixteen months, that kind of thing.
And sixteen months has passed, so yeah, yeah, so the timing is uh I included an August delivery, so didn't come on the organizational meeting day of the next board.
Mm-hmm.
That's true.
And hopefully that there's time for us to either, you know, do something with it or move it. Yeah, m- make some action either to go forward with it. And again, we've already talked that um it's it's the the elected portion terms, things like that, or elected officials will n- not be able to be implemented until twenty twenty seven because by August, everybody's already done their stuff and the caucuses have been held, right?
Right.
So you've got to file.
Yeah, it won't be possible to change any local offices, elected offices for the two thousand twenty five election.
Right.
Um I I would say it won't be possible, it's not practical, they could.
But would it be possible for twenty twenty six for those that would be um
appointed?
Up for uh up for election in twenty twenty six if it passes in this calendar year or shortly in twenty twenty five? For those up for election in twenty twenty six, it wouldn't affect this board necessarily.
It's odd, you're still, we we have odd years.
Who's up for twenty, isn't municipal an every?
All municipals?
Yeah, every, there's there's no twenty six.
Yeah, it's actually the registrar voting.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
The registrar voting collected on the state calendar, not the gubernatorial.
Yeah, we're just, we're odd years.
The gubernatorial.
Everyone else is on the record now, which is odd, not.
Okay. There you go, then don't mind.
So so um alright, so I'm gonna go through this and I'm hoping that everybody contributed. And um you know, the first item is that consider amending the charter to include unaffiliated voters to be represented on boards and commissions.
I have a concern with that, uh there's a um largest voting block for unaffiliates and I think it's important to have uh that service there. But I think that the the language here is leading, it it implies as though unaffiliated voters don't serve and they currently do. In in an elected capacity, there's ballot access through the petition process, it's a state process and it has nothing to do with us. Um and for um the appointed boards and commissions, we accept applications on a regular basis from the town clerk for an affiliated. So I don't I don't see that the uh the question certainly as it's written um is necessary for consideration by here. However, um if it were necessary to expand access, I think that it's um appropriate for the charter commission um to discuss unaffiliated participation in town government. Uh I'd be I'd be accepting of that language, but I don't like it as it's currently written.
I um I actually don't agree. Um I I do believe that the verbiage is incorrect, I believe the verbiage that I was I would be looking for is a pathway for unaffiliated voters to gain representation through election or otherwise. But I know from my own service on a town committee in the past that, let's just say it's the the um Star Spangled Committee. When you have a Star Spangled representative, you are always gonna put them forward before an unaffiliated because that's the nature of that particular town committee. I believe what this was looking for was a more level playing field where there would not be a preference because whether it be the Republican town committee or the Democratic town committee, the onus of the burden is for them to place Republicans and or Democrats, or rather or Democrats, in those positions and the unaffiliated always is the second choice. So I do think that we have to create a pathway for them. I don't think, I do agree that the the wording is incorrect because it implies like we're just trying to get them in there. But there should be a pathway for them, especially because they are the majority.
To that note, because if you look at our boards and commissions, um what especially those appoint, well, both appointed and elected, there's generally uh the language reads, other than the police commission, which by charter, it says there must be two um Republicans, two Democrats and one affiliate, unaffiliated member to serve on that commission. There's no other language for any other board or commission that I'm aware of that it is either mandatory or um uh opens up to, so like Board of Ed for example, there's no pa- there's really no pathway for an unaffiliated to serve on Board of Ed.
I don't agree, there's a petition process to get ballot access and anybody can run and they can get elected.
Well, the the Board of Ed uh election process is one of the things that has to be looked at because the way it is set up currently, there is no petition process for them to run, I mean.
What what Kevin's saying is, if if as an elected, let's start, as an elected person, any unaffiliated voter can petition to get on the ballot, correct?
There's no pathway.
Yes. Right.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right. So.
And and we've had unaffiliates run for the top seat in this town.
Okay, so 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 this, that's not something that would be part of the charter is what you're saying, it's really part of the system. True.
Exactly. And this but and this board has the responsibility in the current charter uh for appointing members of boards and commissions. And so it's incumbent on this uh board to determine who's best um to serve. So while those nominations do come and we have uh certain standards on uh representation from the other parties, we also receive information from the town clerk's office when an unaffiliated person has raised their hand to be considered. So I think that it's appropriate to consider the structure, like you were saying on on uh what the representation may look like. But as far as um um their ability to be represented, an unaffiliated voter, there's there's absolutely access now. A misunderstanding or a lack of interest in following that process or not wanting to affiliate with a party is is not my concern. Uh the structure and process is there and that's why I have a concern with the way that this is written.
So oh I was just gonna say, so Tom, I mean, we're we're we're, the town deals with unaffiliated through the town clerk's office for boards and commission appointments, which that that process is being looked at internally on how we handle that. Um so I I guess I'm curious as to where the charter wouldn't be involved in the unaffiliated process, if anywhere.
Well, the police commission and the board of ethics, the board of ethics also requires equal representation between Democrats, Republicans and unaffiliated.
Okay.
And the charter revision commission could, if they chose, put similar language into others appointed boards and commissions. The elected boards and commissions are Title Nine.
Mm-hmm.
General statutes, that's how you elect people. Uh but the charter has, I think it's sixteen, appointed boards and commissions.
Yeah.
And um two, maybe three, maybe it's the the uh the design review commission as well.
Mm, correct.
Uh have specific language that says, you know, a third, a third, a third essentially.
Mm-hmm.
And they could do the same with other boards and commissions. Not, you know, the what you're doing here is you're saying basically, take a look at this and review it because the desire is to get more engagement by unaffiliated voters. You know, the the typical custom, and it's only a custom, is that the board of selectmen gets the nominees to appointed boards and commissions from the two political parties, uh usually through the chair. And if it's a Republican seat, then the Republican chair nominates and that's and that's common in every town that I've ever been associated with. But it's not, it it's not by anything but custom, it's not in the charter, it's not in the law. It's just um a way to uh support involvement in the two parties essentially. Um but that's breaking down all over the place with the recognition that unaffiliated voters should have an easier pathway to serving on boards and commissions. Part of that is driven by the the lack of people willing to serve. I mean, it's harder and harder to find people, as you know. So with this item, I interpreted this as a way of indicating to the charter revision commission that you would like them to make it easier for unaffiliated voters to find their way on a board and commission.
Yeah, so I was just gonna suggest, if we we haven't, I didn't think this item, I was just like, there's other items in here. But in item three, we talked about looking at, this was a consolidated item, to look at the boards and commissions and to see what sort of appropriations need to be made as far as term size, um if they're no longer used, appointed versus elected. And could it, we just include like a D here to consider?
Party affiliation.
Party affiliation, yeah.
Yep, I so I I I I agree with that, if we strike number one and we add a letter D under number three,
Yeah.
if that's acceptable at all, I think it accomplishes exactly what uh Stephen's concerns were and what we what we discussed.
And it's general, we don't wanna be, I mean, we will.
I think it's overly prescriptive in one, I agree.
Yeah, I I, okay, it's.
So take, is it consensus to take number one out of the list and add D to number three?
I'm good with that.
Is everyone?
Yes, and then put the D in on item three.
Another three.
So what would D be seen as?
Yeah, what's the verbiage?
Consideration for, I said unaffiliated voters, um Kevin said party affiliation, but we're not gonna limit ours or D's. Um.
No.
You you whichever way people are better off, I I.
Well, it could be about balance, which is referred to in the four.
Okay.
Like there.
So part, I I don't really have any eye in which wording we use.
Well, I'd I'd like the verbiage, unaffiliated to be there, 'cause that's really what I want them to.
Of unaffi- okay. Right.
Party affiliation or unaffiliation, or anything.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I I've written down party affiliation and unaffiliated voter representation.
Great. That's it.
Beautiful.
Okay.
Nice. Okay, what's up now?
Okay, so item two, I I don't really understand what that means 'cause again, it's talking about kind of where we are in three, so.
I'd move to strike it, it doesn't make sense, different boards and commissions have different roles.
I didn't know what that meant either.
For engaging the public and all sorts of other things. If we wanna say adopting Robert's rules as the rules of procedure for the Town of Simsbury, that's appropriate. But uh otherwise, the same rules of procedure don't work from different boards and commissions.
Well, I, yeah, I don't know about rules of procedure, um I think I do understand, I don't know why rules, same rules of procedure. um came from, but I I know I've spoken to this before as a specific example. So there are some, uh especially when you're talking appointed commissions, boards and commissions, there are some that are that are under like original charter rules and some that are on amended charter rules. So for example, um if you have a a commission that has a pathway for um commission members who just don't show up, right? Um some have a a pathway to rectify that others do not. And I I think that should all be the same, operating under the same kind of uh if if there's amended charter rules, then everybody should be under the same amended charter rules, not original charter rules, which some boards and commissions are still operating under.
Mm-hmm.
So for example, the Aging and Disability Commission has no pathway if somebody um is is appointed to that seat and then never shows up. And two and a half years, three years later, they're still taking that appointed seat. And until they contact the town clerk, there is nothing you can do about it.
Yeah, historic district as well has tried to make changes to that as well with people who, you know, if you in a in one year
Hmm.
Yes.
miss a certain number of meetings, then that will can be replaced out.
Yeah.
So could.
'Cause it gets it gets difficult to to get a quorum when that happens.
Yeah.
Correct.
Would you like to narrow this to?
Let me see.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was gonna suggest you go. I was gonna put it, I was gonna add rules of procedure under item three and make it E.
Could do that.
I was gonna say have minimum a minimum engagement, you know what I mean, that if you don't engage.
Right.
You I I don't know how to how to say it.
Well, take.
I would I would suggest operate in this same rules of procedure for removal of members.
Inactive members.
Inactive members.
Yep.
Mm.
And then moving it to E probably makes some sense.
I know, I like that everything, it falls under.
Everything will just fall under three.
Yeah, it all falls under.
Use the word uniform? Yeah, yeah. Operate under uniform rules.
So is it?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
If this board appoints somebody to a, 'cause we can't remove a an elected person,
Mm-hmm.
whether they show up or not.
Mm-hmm.
Um but if this board appoints them, do we need additional uh and maybe clarification in the charters, okay. But do we need um some sort of authority or power to remove them if we're the ones who appointed them?
Yes, you you do need and you can you can adopt it, but if you don't adopt it, then the member serves until the end of his or her term and then you don't reappoint, but that could be
Right.
six years of the HDC.
Correct, four years, six years, until they contact the town clerk.
Right. And it happens.
So there'd have to be some sort of, this is what the charter commission would discuss, I don't wanna overtake it, but about um
Right.
how flagrant somebody's vacancy would have to really be, not attending, 'cause that could be wielded the wrong way, I imagine removing somebody.
Right, and there's there's lots of good examples from other charters and how to do this. It's usually not in each individual commission. It's in the section that says there shall be the following appointed commissions and each commission shall have the power to remove inactive members or something like that, so it sort of follows through with all.
Would it be the commission itself or would it be the appointing authority like the board here?
Uh it could be either way.
Okay, I guess that's for them to consider.
So what do we?
I mean, I would imagine there are exceptions, if something like a personal situation or something like that, but that's to be determined through all of this.
Yeah.
Right.
But E today with Zoom, it's so much easier if you're bedridden or something, you can just zoom in.
Yeah.
Because years ago, you you couldn't.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So it's it's really less of an excuse. If you accept the appointment, you really should accept the responsibility to attend, even if it's electronically.
So what what is the what is the what are we putting here? Like, is this a separate item? Oh, we did make it three, okay, wasn't sure.
Mm-hmm.
Nine E.
E.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the way it reads is consider amending the charter to require all boards and commissions operate under uniform rules of procedure for removal of inactive members.
Okay.
Reminded to that.
Okay, so look, I just have a question that I just thought of.
Mm-hmm.
Um you know how all the board, a lot of the boards and commissions are in the code in the charter with all their stipulations and some are not?
Mm-hmm.
We've talked in the past about why are some in there, some are, and it's harder to make changes if they're in there, if they're not in there.
Mm-hmm.
Is is that listed as looked at or is that just?
Well, that's. That's a different question. And and a lot of times
Okay.
um another way to do it is to say there shall be a beautification commission as established by ordinance. Instead of spelling out beautification commission in charter, and then if you wanna change it, you gotta change it charter.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
You say there shall be an ordinance and it's much easier to change it ordinance.
Yep.
And that's something they want, because a lot of towns are going in that direction, saying we want these fifteen commissions and we want them established by ordinance.
That's how EDC has created the draft.
Exactly, that's the more recent ones, that's how we've done it. We've referenced it in the charter, but then created it in in ordinance.
So could we include something under item three to to?
Three D, isn't it three D?
Three F.
By the way, that's all now one, so three is now number one.
That's right.
Oh yeah.
What's the one E?
Three, we had an E.
Now we're one to one G.
I thought we're on S now.
One F.
One F, whatever.
E is minimal engagement. This would be an F.
Right, so does that make sense to just look at how we we define the boards or do you not say it?
I you know, I think I really think it's captured in totality, but.
Okay, that's fine.
So what's what, did we add something else? I'm sorry, I lost the ball.
One became three D, two became three E.
I got that. What's three E now? Or one E?
Uh, amending the charter, get rid of act inactive members.
Basically members.
Okay, so that's good. I thought we added something else beyond that. I know, I'm good, thank you.
The inactive members, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay, um review the election process for Board of Education members.
I'd like to move to strike that. I think it's consistent with three. It talks about terms of office and all the rest, it's covered in there.
Well, I guess that makes a distinction between election, elected and non-elected. So um the only reason, I mean, I I was, I don't know who else, but.
It's a Board of Education, it says boards and commissions, it seems acceptable, I I can discuss it there.
Yeah, but right now, so this
But it doesn't talk about elected or non-elected process.
And it cir- circles back to unaffiliated, the you know, the Dems put up two, the Republicans put up two.
They're in.
The voter has no choice.
No, I don't agree. There's an absolutely a petition process for interested persons to put their name forward and we've had that also happen in this town before.
Right.
And it and.
So here's what I would suggest, if we're gonna do review the number of boards and commissions and make adjustments, I I might say appointed boards and commissions there. Because to me, the elected boards and commissions in most cases follow a different term.
Mm-hmm.
And the board, to me, the election process for the Board of Education members is something, I I I mean, people have called out in the past because of the.
Mm-hmm.
But three C says appointed versus elected, so would that all fall under that?
Let me see, review the number. I think that's talking about boards that are elected today that should be appointed
Mm-hmm.
more so than rules for electeds. Is that why, how I read that?
That's the way I read it.
That's what I read.
So maybe we reword that, just review if uh if elect.
Why are we, why are we calling it out separately? Someone needs to explain this to me.
Calling what out? The Board of Ed?
Right, that separately, yeah.
Because we want it to be looked at.
Just include it in there. It it's already, it's already said in three. I don't agree.
Okay, well, who who thinks it should be called out separately? I kinda do.
I I do think it should be separately because it's it's a specific, the way it operates, and I hear what you're saying that for unaffiliated, but if 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 you, the Republicans put up two people and the Democrats put up two people and then there's a random Democrat that wants to be part of the Board of Ed, where is there room um um uh for them to petition into?
There is a petition process, there's a primary that happens after town committee's endorsed, that's also happened here. It's happened in other towns in Farmington that there's been an opposition ballot or an opposition slate. I just don't agree that this is not, the fact that others have been unwilling to work within the process is not an indication the process is is not working. It's it's a result of a lack of interest in follow-through. I also think bluntly uh that while their process is not perfect, the town committees um have a responsibility and work hard to find the appropriate people for each one of these roles. And there is an accountability in place among the leaders in those in those parties to find the right people. And the people absolutely have uh um uh the ability to access uh the ballot through alternative means than going just through the party process. And like I said, it's not as though it hasn't happened. There's been a history in this town of it happening and in other towns in in Connecticut too. So um I just don't see a reason why we need to put a target on the back of the Board of Education in a town where education is is actually pretty good here and try to monkey with the entire process. I think that we call it out, we allow the charter commission to receive testimony uh from those who are willing to to speak on whether or not they felt like it was appropriate and then it can come back to us with their recommendations. Board of Ed, Board of Ethics, um zoning, whatever.
The Board of Ed has been a, I mean, I'm the spoiler or whatever you wanna call it. It's always been an unwritten agreement that the Republicans and the Democrats only put forth the exact number and basically they they're shooing. So I don't think it's a fair election because the Democrats and the Republicans equally share the blame on this, that they have basically excused the term, but I'm just gonna use it, rig the system. Whoever they put forth.
I think that's offensive, Steve. I don't think that anybody's rigged a system by establishing a fair, clear uh process to get access to the ballot.
Then run three people or four people, you know.
Well, do why don't we do that? I guess I would say then why don't we just do that for Board of Selectmen if it's so great? Why don't we just have the RTC and the DTC pick the people they want and push them forward? I mean, that's what we do in the Board of Ed, right?
I think.
It's the same thing.
I think I could comment on uh how the DTC's process last time was for appointing members of the Board of Selectmen. It can work or that initiative can fail. And in the end, the voters have the ultimate say.
Well, the caucus, you have a caucus to.
And that's only one method. There's also, like I said, I I just um I see no reason to put a target on the back of the Board of Education. In particular here, I think it's covered in in uh item three.
In particular, I've had people complain to me about this specific one, so I'll be honest, I'm one of the people that wrote it.
And neither one of them has stood up to stand for election.
That what?
A.
What did I didn't hear that.
He said and neither one of them has stood to stand up for election.
Granted, that that's a valid point, but I just, you know, the gentleman's agreement has been in place for decades.
I don't know that it's a gentleman's agreement. There is a there is a there is a certain number of seats that are available for each party
And what is it, irony?
um and those are the ones who get elected.
So having been on the nomination committee for one of the parties, doesn't matter which one, I know.
I think it was the Democrats, but go ahead, Steve.
You're assuming. I'm thinking you're with the Republicans. But the long story short is it's a gentleman's agreement that is not discussed. It's been there in place and that's why I think it needs to be bucked because it's only BOE.
I think it's a masque.
There is nowhere else this exists except BOE. And that's why it was called out, is because this is a specific.
It's been called about by a number of people.
Well, it's.
And yeah, I've heard it from multiple people. It's not just my thing, I.
It's, yeah, so we're we're not asking to do it, we're just saying to consider it. It was considered last time and not voted on, I believe. I I'm pretty sure that was one of the things that was in there. Um.
Yes, it it's
So.
it's been considered in in every charter revision process that I've been involved in.
And is it worthy, I'll I'll ask your opinion, Bob. Is it worthy to keep it as a separate item to call it out?
Yes, call for you to be.
Okay, well, I I still, I mean, I don't feel like.
It will come up even if you don't put it on the list.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, is it considered leading similar to the first one?
I don't find, but take it off.
Well, then you then if you're gonna say that, then you could take number five and say, don't talk about the terms for the Board of Selectmen, chief elected and and any of that either because you're just gonna lump it into three, is what I'm hearing too. So we could just say everything is item three and then we don't have to talk about.
You mean.
I don't.
You just wanna go home or something?
Um no, I'm just saying, I mean, we we can use that same logic
Yeah.
for each of these.
Well, if you wanna go to number five, there's an issue with number five in that state law doesn't allow.
Staggered.
Stagger, well, it doesn't allow four-year terms for legislative bodies.
Oh. Mm-hmm.
And with only two-year terms, you can't stagger.
Yep.
Mm.
Right, but the chief elected can be a four-year term.
Can be four years, yes. And in many places, they have gone to that. So.
And they bump their salary to a hundred thousand dollars a year, so.
Stylen, that's a.
But you can add that to the list too, if you want.
Stagger. No, um okay, so the Board of Ed, I I'm I'm okay with the Board of Ed alone.
So.
I I mean, if we have to take a vote on it, I I mean, we can do that. I I, you know, I'm trying to be collaborative here that we send something um to consider. I'm not trying to hurt anybody and if you look at other ones, we just, if we wanna soften the wording on that and just say, you know,
I love you.
consider.
Well, it should really be the nomination process, not the election process. There's no flaw to the election process. They put up a slate.
Good, they're on the ballot.
The bylaws for each of the town committees are, you know, adjust the the nomination process.
You want.
So it really is, you're you're talking about the composition of the Board of Education is what your concern is.
Which is true, you could throw a minimal representation of unaffiliated in there then.
Kind.
I think that's covered in three.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, can we just, can we just put a question mark on four and then come back to it as we finish the rest because
It is.
Sure.
Sure.
'Cause that's, there's other, there's other stuff in here. Um.
So five, you're saying the only thing that could stay in five would be B.
Right.
So can we leave that? I mean, I'd still like to leave that one.
Yeah. Yeah, me too.
They could, they can consider it and they may.
Yeah, all of these are.
It's B and they're removing the S. Chief, there's only one chief elected official.
Well, maybe we'll have four now.
Well, you can't be chief.
It'd be chief number two. Okay, so review.
Co-co-chief.
Co-chief.
Chief. Isn't that, wasn't there something? I won't go there. Re-re-review extending the term length of term for four for the chief elected official.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, if I could, would that then allow a port to be staggered?
No.
No.
No, because it's only one person.
No, stagger.
It's one, it's staggered, only one, gotcha.
I can't stagger my, you can't stagger herself.
Can't stay.
And I will also say, I think staggered would just create everybody in insanity of running, who's running, when you're running.
That's how Board of Finance is now. I don't think it's.
That's how Board of Finance.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
Yeah.
It is, and Board of Eds.
Yeah.
That's true, but they don't, they don't really run. Okay. Sorry, I I my friends are on the Board of Ed, I'm not trying to.
Mine too, I'm not against them.
Okay, so three, five, we've changed, one one chief elected official. Number six is to review the town form of government. Is the town manager Board of Selectmen form working? And then this, and then consider adopting the mayor council form of government, which is the more standard um ma- town manager form.
Uh going back to five, we did find Town of Cromwell, those have a four-year town council, so maybe we check that.
Oh. Okay.
So I'd be one to add in the uh
Yeah.
uh the term length, the four years and substituting staggered terms.
Yeah. Staggered terms, did you say?
I I'm I'm, I think it's, I think it's appropriate to consider it and just like you've heard about Board of Education.
Right.
I've heard about it here, but we went through a significant change for this for this team here.
Correct.
Yep.
And I think that it added uh you know, a huge learning curve to a majority of the board.
It did.
Correct, especially for.
Thankfully, we're all easy to work with.
I like I like this group, I like this group, so.
But like, but like, we had to, we got elected and it was mostly a new board and immediately go into budget.
Yeah.
And you know, I think coming into budget this year, uh I think we will
Yeah. Okay.
be able to serve town, you know, with more knowledge.
So five stays the way it is.
Yeah, I I I suggest leaving five the way it is and the commission will say to me, hey, can we do that?
Okay.
And I'll give it more time and it's like, great.
If it's, if you go to six, yes.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, then then six is the question, um you know, just basically, I don't know how we wanna review it, but review the form of government that we have, right? Um and that's really my thing. I I've I'm one who said, you know, should this be a mayor council? Because the first electmen's that I come across are all chief executive officers. They're very little um chief electeds and most of the, as a public administration student, most of the town manager form of governments are usually mayor council or council chair. Um and that was leading me into seven and eight also, but um because some of them fall into the council chair items, if so, I don't.
So I like number six, except for everything after the colon. I don't think it's necessary to add that clarity. I think it leads it too much. Uh so my recommendation is to review the town, the uh town form of government. And it allows flexibility for them to receive, you know, testimony and have deliberations on what the appropriate structure is.
I agree with that.
Right.
I agree with one exception, that the the name mayor versus first selectman is still a valid consideration that should be addressed.
Right. And then.
That's why I like it in numbers, I'm sorry. I talked a lot.
Um I would also to add to Steve is that in we say review the town form of government, we don't want it to, knowing what we went through previously with charter review and changing our form of government, is that we are now su- trying to lead them to say, we don't think having a town manager form of government is working.
No.
Let's re- so that like, I don't want it to, the assumption that that is what we're asking.
We're not saying that here. That's not what this says, though.
It does today.
It does if if he, no, if if you leave it at just the colon, I feel like I don't want that to seem leading that that's our underlying message.
Well, I think the second line could be its own number, consider adopting the mayor town council form of government. 'Cause that's a separate thing from
Why don't we?
from the town form of government.
So why don't we do six with A, B and C under it? Let's say.
Let's see.
Well, I'm not there yet. A, review the town form of government, right?
My boy.
Yeah.
Six, A, consider a- adopting mayor council form of government.
Yeah.
And then if you're gonna talk about, oh, that seven isn't necessarily related. But item eight, um well, again, seven and eight kind of, if you have a council, there's a lot of councils that self-elect the chair. So you don't have a separate election for a chief executive. And then there's no concern that the person who loses the chief elected thing runs, they they, everybody runs for the council.
Right, in a lot of towns, the custom is the top vote getter in the majority party becomes the council chair.
Right, so so those all blend. I'm not a fan of the, I I've seen towns that have had the council selecting the chief elected and gone back to a ch- uh like Manchester, I think, just change. a ch- uh like Manchester, I think, just changed from that to have a separately elected so that the voice of the public can speak for who they want as their chief elected official, not just six people.
Right.
Um so I'm not a fan of that and and I'm not saying that cause it's gonna be me, I twenty twenty seven is a long way off. So um I'm just saying out of fairness. Um so so that is one thing that I have a concern with, um and then again.
Well Wendy, quick question, what if the um the sixth person, the person doesn't wanna be like the the.
Well, then they would just not put their name in, right?
They were all putting information.
Well, not the highest vote, right, if you did the highest vote getter, I'm not a fan.
That's just by tradition, that it's by tradition, it's still elected among the.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Yeah, elected, not by.
Bells it, it's always by tradition.
Yeah, the elected, so 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 that I'm just trying to, I'm blabbing on this, but the other item number eight. If you had a council, that doesn't apply anymore, you're not gonna have that situation because you're just running for council.
Right.
Right, so.
Yeah, you could, just because you change the name from board to council doesn't mean.
Yeah, but if you, yeah, but you don't run, if you don't have a separately elected chief executive, nobody's coming in second, we're all coming in in some
Yeah, that's true, right. Right.
out of the six. So I don't know if that needs to be called out. Because it would be if you're looking at the forms of government and you're gonna consider a council with a chair, that's just part of a council with a chair.
That's right.
So it so um don't I don't know what I where I ended up with that, but I just think there's consolidation here that doesn't need to be spelled out.
I think seven and eight are pretty clear and give the commission the charge to look at these different aspects and you you will all be invited to come talk to me about it and.
So can we do it, can we do it as six A, B and C, like and and put it all under review the form of government?
So I would like it to to say review the town form of government.
Yeah.
And then item A is uh uh consider amending a separate election of the chief elected official. And then consider revising the charter to eliminate the provision wherever it's the it's what's the rest of eight. Um and then um uh the number eleven is clarify the roles of the chief uh executive officer, that's the item C.
So A would be seven, B would be eight and C would be eleven under item six.
Yes.
And then strike out is the town manager form working.
That's my recommendation, yeah.
And not recommending any form of government is what you're saying?
I I I think it muddies the waters, I think that they know what the options are and will be able to talk about that.
You think that's.
I think that's true, I mean they I I can't imagine they they won't consider that, we're now, I don't know, five years, seven years in.
Yeah.
They'll, I think it'll be a threshold issue for them to consider.
I I I will ask, how does eleven tie into the form of government? As far as, I guess it's a result, it's a result of the form of government.
Because it's a discussing, yes. Correct.
Um.
The the lack of clarity there, and also there's a minor typo, it's clarify of the roles, I think it's clarify the roles or.
Okay, but we're keeping it in under the as an item, okay, so it's still called out separately.
Correct. That's my opinion.
So six, A, B and C, we're not necessarily pointing out
That's probably my sense.
mayor town council versus Board of Select.
I I that's my opinion.
Okay, and and again, so even though I disagree with seven, everybody else agrees with that. Like, I mean, it's part of the form of government, I s- I still think we should have a separately elected chief elected. But if they look at the council and come back to us and say they want a council chair, that's what it's gonna be, right?
Well, we this this board will still have to vote on it, so.
So. We vote, so fine.
Yeah.
Fine.
So seven becomes six A.
I. So we're 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 getting rid of
I just.
this altogether as well, town mayor form, council form of government.
Correct.
So I'm making seven, six A.
But yeah.
Correct.
Why why are we getting rid, consider adopting the mayor town form?
That's my recommendation, because I think it muddies the water.
I know, I I.
But I think it's something that should be considered, I'm not saying I'm pro.
Yeah.
They they don't have to not consider it, it's just that we don't have to be prescriptive in this document about saying.
I don't think it's prescriptive, it's giving them insight into the opportunities they have.
Yeah, I I I don't think it's prescriptive either because.
Yeah.
Well, I'll I'll say that I would oppose it, right, so that's also I'm I'm providing some of my personal opinion of leaving it here.
Yeah.
Alright, that's a little stronger.
Right, I I would prefer to keep it in.
You wanna make it six C?
It'll be, hold it, that I'm self-confused.
It would be six A.
Well, I think in 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 some ways, if we're talking about like in if
Well.
in what is currently seven and you say official vote by Board of Selectmen slash town council, but we haven't mentioned town council before.
Right.
It it's like, well, where did that come from? So it's almost needs to be A and then seven becomes B, eight becomes C and eleven becomes D.
No, I actually follow that, believe me.
Okay, so.
Eight becomes B.
Correct.
Seven becomes A.
No, uh A is consider adopting, then seven becomes six B. Eight becomes six C and eleven becomes six D.
Well, in.
Where's the consider adopting, where am I?
So review the town form of government.
Oh, I see, yep, got it, got it, got it, so that's that sentence is A, seven is B, eight is C and eleven is D.
That's what I'm proposing. So so I I know Kevin has a problem with the mayor council form of government. Um and I I'm I'm a fan of it, but I'm also open to a council chair. And I'm also open to, if people wanna keep a first selectman, God bless you, I guess is what I would say.
Yeah.
Um so do we make it, we know that they're gonna review the town form of government, do we just include something along? I mean, I I I think.
You could say like options including mayor town council, town council chair, current, you know, current Board of Selectmen, yeah.
But then it circles back to.
Yeah, why?
I know this.
Yeah, but it's different to me, cause the first one is do we have a town manager or a Board of Selectmen? We have a hybrid, uh so actually there's three options. This is a different one, do we have a Board of Selectmen or a town council? It's not up at the top, it's now, okay, so we have a town manager.
Right.
Now, do you want a Board of Selectmen or a town council? You know, it yes, it is contingent on the first one being answered. But it has legs of its own as far as a decision if you stick with town manager form of government.
Would you be able to help me understand um what the nuances between a town council versus a Board of Selectmen would be? Structurally or in implementation?
So structurally, to my knowledge or um and understanding, it's pretty much not. With the exception of a town council usually is affiliated with a man- uh mayor.
Mm-hmm.
And a Board of Selectmen is usually affiliated with the first selectman, but Bob, obviously you have more insight, I shouldn't be answering that.
I no, I think that's correct, I think it's.
Okay, that was right.
So it's just a name change.
It's just a name change, that's why.
But that's, it's a nuance on the name.
It's mostly sem- it's mostly semantic.
Yeah.
There is mayor council form of government is called out in the statute as one of the options. Um but there's another section that uh sorry. Somebody from Miles City, Montana. Um there is the option within the Home Rule Act, there's this omnibus provision that says for lo- matters of local concern, which what we're talking about. Towns and cities are free to do as they choose and organizing their government. But mayor council is is called out specifically as a form of government. Um town council chair, mayor, first selectman, it's all how it's written. It's all the powers that are described for that office in the charter. And it's all over the place, it's really a matter of local custom. The so-called strong mayor form of government implies that the mayor is the chief executive and the chief elected. But there's lots of places that have mayors that are chief elected but not chief executive, it's just town manager. You could interchange first selectman with mayor and it doesn't make any difference, it's really it's a a semantic change.
Mm.
What matters is the powers vested in the office by virtue of the charter.
So I that I was gonna just say, um so I'm not insinuating, again, that the mayor is the that we go to.
So then.
Yeah. It's not a matter.
I'm I'm not insinuating a strong mayor form of government, I'm insinuating a weak mayor form of government.
No, I, yeah, right.
Just so instead of saying you're the first selectman, you can say you're the mayor and know and people know what you are and what your role is. And it's and it's documented as a form of government, that's a standard, that's my, where I'm coming from on this.
Yeah.
It's just cleaner, um but if people.
I I think there's also a sense that a mayor connotes a bigger city, more of an urban setting. You know, mayors, urban towns and cities have mayors, small towns have first selectmen or or.
Except in Ohio, they have really small towns with mayors.
So I I guess I don't, just I I, you know, I like I said, if if and when you're first selectman, it would be more fun to say you're the mayor, which is what, but I don't, you know, like the people that I deal with, Rocky Hill, West Hartford, um Manchester, Mayor Moran. They're all what I am, right, with a bigger city, but they have a town manager and they're mayors.
So add uh item E is uh consider the entertainment value of titles of elected officials.
I I would like that.
Well, I I would say also too, like if we're gonna continue having this in here, we had this long discussion, what's the difference between the two? We can't expect the uh commission to know the difference between the two, so we just have to call it out to say that this the purpose of the it being named.
It's really semantic, so it's really, you you, what what we wanna know is, I mean, I guess to Kevin's point. Going back to seven, eight and eleven are really the meat of it all.
So why don't we just say, can we just say, you know, re- uh uh we're consider, re- review the town form of government.
Yeah.
Consider other configurations, which they're gonna do anyway.
Correct.
Um of of that are that are out in the public administration space, you know, whatever, right, I mean, that's really what we're saying.
But I will, review the current form of government in relation to other potential forms or something like that.
That's all.
I like that.
Yeah, because A, B and C will fall into line with whichever ones they evaluate, right?
So then you got to, yeah, so then seven goes back to A. It goes back to A, eleven goes back to C.
Well, it's a nuance, but the title of the chief elected official is something that really for continuity, you wanna address in the charter.
Right.
Well, do can we? Right, can we put that up, I mean, that's really, uh yeah, is that, does that imply that that's what we're doing, I guess, right?
Yeah, and I'll, you know, I'll tell them that. And you know, the things, once the list goes to them. Feel free to elaborate what you all think in the form of a memo or letter.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, this is all intended to be a free form of discussion to get at the best
Right.
um result.
Okay, so then.
We can tell you why they didn't change it last time.
Yeah, okay, I know why.
Thought it was a bridge too far.
Yeah.
Thought, well, we got town council manage, uh town, you know, council chair plus they thought that's too much change, we wanna get the town manager form in, so let's just change that. And the instruction to us, with Tom Cook and myself, was leave everything else alone and insert town manager where it says first selectman. Sort of oversimplifying it and that sort of led to some.
What led to all the Advil? Would be a cinemaphon, whatever, whatever your preference.
That wasn't the perfect way to do it, but the thought was, let's take a step and then in future years, if the town wants, they could take the next step to go to full town manager. That's like where I think it is now.
That's our motto, is a land of steady habits, right?
There we go.
And and Wendy, Wendy, if I may, as a former mayor, I would have loved to have been a first selectman, so we.
Really?
Yeah, I think it's all the perspective you do.
I think the grass is always greener on the other side of the tidal.
Yeah, right, okay.
So so not to belabor this point, but under something cause if we're gonna talk about it, I don't know Wendy, if you're planning to even bring up um the one, the list that Mark sent over, because nine.
We can, let's get to, well, what was?
Well, because nine is related to this then, which is consideri- consider having like odd numbers on the.
Yeah, that. And yeah, I don't know, that's that's, well, well, let's get, let's.
I mean, they can review that, but.
Well, well, we haven't talked about Mark's letter, cause I don't know why. The number of members on the board uh is not something that I I figured they'll figure that out too, just like um you know, because I'm hoping that they, I included in my letter that they look at charters from other communities, which they're gonna do anyway from what Bob has said.
Mm-hmm.
But there's there's good models out there of town, if we see town manager form of governments Charters that have been in place for forty, fifty years that have been working.
Yeah.
On, you know, so I would hope that those are some of the models that we use going forward, that's kind of my hope. Not where I would say that, and I do say it, so.
Oh, you said it now.
Yeah, I did say it, so I'm gonna stop saying that, let's let's we leave marks for now, let's just try to get through our list, because this is what we're here for. Um so we got six cleaned up with A, B and C, I think, right, seven, eight, nine, eleven.
We said nine and ten in the middle.
D, C and D.
Six with A, B and C, right?
And D, eleven becomes D.
D, D is eleven.
Well, what was A now?
A is consider adopting mayor.
Consider adopting here.
I thought we took that out.
I agree, I I asked for it to be removed.
Well, I thought we said consider other.
Well, I agree.
Form of government.
Oh yeah, title of chief elected official. Is that?
I don't know how to say it other than you know, I I'm happy to say mayor council, I'm happy to say first selectmen, Board of Selectmen, you know, just.
Well, isn't it just the title of the chief elected official, anyway you slice it?
True.
Yeah.
So I mean, just call it out for, cause we're, it's not supposed to be a deep dive on that one from how I'm hearing it, it's just pick a name, any name.
Yeah.
Right.
So A would become title of the chief elected official.
Yeah.
Title and role.
Title and role.
But nothing stupid.
Well, title and role of the chief elected official and the also the council and the Board of Select.
Sure, yes.
It all goes together, right?
It does, yeah.
Title and role of the chief elected and the council, whatever you call it.
Yeah, legislative body.
Legislative body, perfect.
This is gonna look a lot better when we make these ads.
Okay.
It's hard to follow.
So we are still the A, B, C and D.
But I'm not sending it tomorrow night, am I? Okay, I thought I was taking tomorrow off.
Yes.
All right, the next item.
Review.
Review the referendum triggers throughout the various sections of the charter.
Yeah, someplace it's five percent of electors, other places it's ten percent of electors. And there's some thought behind that, you want certain actions to have a higher bar. For instance, the town meeting, there is a remnant town meeting in the current charter, but it's a very high bar. You can't get something to town meeting without, I think it's ten percent of electors, which I believe in something like nineteen hundred signatures, which is anyone who's ever circulated a petition knows, that's a lot of signatures.
Middle one, just saying.
Okay, so, all right, so let's leave, that's a simple one, isn't it?
That's a simple one.
Yeah, I think that's worth it.
Uh no offense, no objection, I don't know why everybody looks at me to object.
Okay.
I do.
Okay, well, this Kevin, I don't know. You can look at me for this one, um I I I, of course, I included this one, review the current charter language defining the directing ordering staff. Because now it says, the someone said, well, not direct staff and then there's one line on under it that says you can't order staff. And there's no clarity there whatsoever as to what constitutes what that means. And I did look into other charters and there's many different structures.
Yeah, I think Glastonbury is.
Has a really good one, I sent that to you, um.
So there's a pro- there's a um, you know, term of art uh called policy governance, you may have had it in your MPA program. And so I'd I'd be, I'd I'd offer that um establishing a a policy or a, you know, a a system of policy governance or something like that with regard to this, we, this is a policy board, not an a a managing board. So that's all they need to do is clarify this, the the policy governance role of the legislative body. And that's also leads to clarifying the role of the chief executive that we talked about, chief elected uh uh official earlier. I think that this this is, there's a lot of language in here about directing and ordering and and all that and and all that, and really the, what we're trying to say is that this the the.
So give me an example, what that means.
Policy governance?
Yeah.
Policy governance means that we set uh policy uh and approve a budget. And we uh hire a competent uh staff to implement that policy and that involves managing staff. We hire and fire this guy over a year and we hold him accountable and him alone.
So how does that alter or or have someone look at that specific charter item that's in there? Cause it's a specific charter item that creates a lot of um misunderstanding.
So I'd say that just if you like the.
I would like that in there, to look at that specific clause in the.
So I'm not gonna oppose it, but I I feel like the language is slightly awkward, that's that's why I do it.
Well, we can, we can.
Can we just make it one line that says, review the current charter language?
Yeah. Yes.
You're refining that this is a, the Board of Selectmen is a policy board. Is that?
Articulating that the legislative body is a policy governance board.
Okay, as as long as it's, as long as it has them, people look to fix that that block in the charter.
Yeah.
I think that's fair Wendy and I agree with it, I just wanted to clean up the language a little bit.
That's fine, I just my my one item on here. That's the one item that I I, well, that's the only one that I know should be corrected because it doesn't work, the way it's written.
You don't have one?
Correct.
We're all in agreement.
Okay, so we got elevens done. Consider merging the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I I was pro on you.
I'm looking at you, Kevin, are you, I I'm.
I'm pro.
Pro.
We all think that that should be considered, um there's just a lot of overlap and other towns include that.
I I think it's gonna offer um some good and healthy debate, I think, on structure.
Yeah, great.
Um I haven't served on on either. Um I do have concerns when we're overly prescriptive on saying consider merging. I think it could, you know, con- consider um uh the structure of. uh the structure of the roles of the planning and zoning commissions.
Well, then you're gonna not like the wording in Mark's letter because that does not reflect this way either.
He talks a lot about the board of finance in there too, but I'm not prepared to put that in in this either unless that's what we're gonna do.
Getting rid of. Okay, good, so we'll get to that too, so that's great. Okay, so consider.
That's fine. Well, should should the language say outside of planning and zoning is any commissions that may have overlap of uh.
We don't have any in our list.
I think that um that's one.
In our list, that was the only one in our list.
Um yeah, I want to review the number and functions of the board appointed board.
Yeah, three.
Oh, true.
But it's more generic.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's funny because now if you if you take Kevin's logic to get rid of the board of ed
Shall we?
as an elected, I could say, why why would I call out merging, planning and zoning?
I agree, let's strike that i- item and and make sure that it's covered uh under number three.
But I I'm not agreeing with you yet on that because it's to me, the board of ed and the planning and zoning commissioner are a higher level
Yes.
than all the appointed boards that we have. Um so this is maybe circling back to that board of ed item. Um both of these are hot bigger ticket items than just changing design review board from five to ten people.
Isn't planning, appointing and zoning elected?
No, they're both elected.
No, but they're not elected.
Maybe if you decide to run for one, they'll know. No kidding. So so that's my that's my concern is
Well, it does it so number three says including colon, we could make this
whitewashing that.
number twelve would be three F, you know?
Consider the board of.
Land use boards, the role and structure of land use boards.
Yeah, because a lot of towns combine their inland wetlands commissions into their zoning.
Right, because open space and conservation would also be land use boards.
Well, well, what about his language was great.
Yeah, like did land use change?
That is that.
Land use.
Does that do in Stark District also land use, it's kind of combined along.
We're still on TV, sorry.
Sure.
Well, then if we're gonna move that in as a separate item, then maybe we put the board of ed under that
I think we do.
under three as a separate call out as a separate.
Yeah, I I really I really just uh you know, strongly disagree with calling it out, uh in the same way with the board of finance. I think that it's gonna be appropriately discussed, both of those boards. Uh but among the the top three boards here, I don't think that I'm I'm interested in discussing this here.
Okay, so so if you don't like the board of ed, that's why you're saying you don't wanna discuss the planning, zoning, merging either.
I I the the land use boards, we were talking about adding that, and if you wanna call that out, I think that's appropriate.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We've had a lot of conflict here just in the last uh what month or two about you know, what's what's open space mean and
Yeah.
Land use, right.
uh who gets the referral? I think that it's it's uh worthy of a healthy discussion and a maybe a.
Yeah.
And that kind of covers ten on, I know we're not to cock him, but it covers ten on our letter, cause that's they're all land use boards.
Well, I think it.
What I'm hearing is twelve becomes one F.
One F, oh, it's one, I was gonna say three F.
Mm-hmm.
If we just.
Twelve is being reworded though, uh li- uh from what I understand, uh uh consider the uh role and structure of the land use boards.
Land use, that kind of covers.
So we're are we not doing the board of ed then?
Okay. We're not, we're coming back to them.
Uh adding it separately.
Or okay.
It sounds like we may get overruled.
Well, I mean, it's a we're not in the majority or and then.
I think. Yeah, we're going up to it.
Well, yeah, we can if we really wanna keep it in there, but let's let's just finish up the last three, cause those are easy. I think they're easy.
Did I Did our change in ten somewhat tie thirteen in?
Thirteen, or we could tie them up?
Well, that's um thirteen I interpret as uh one of the things you when you do these commissions is
That's different.
you really go line by line, you make sure all the general statute references are still current, cause they may have changed, really, and all the cross references are correct.
Tedious.
See, it's very tedious, and that's what I see number and Franklin will do most of that, but uh uh that's what I see thirteen as.
Okay.
Housekeeping language changes, last time we debated gender neutral change, instead of he, his, we changed that.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that has to be looked at again these days, I don't know, but that'll be up to the commission, but this triggers them to say, don't forget tedious, long, hard housekeeping work of making sure the language syncs up with each other, cause we make a change in section two or three, you gotta make sure you don't have to change something in section nine or one, that kind of thing.
Um question. Doesn't thirteen, fourteen and fifteen all kind of say the same thing in different ways?
I I agree on thirteen and fourteen being similar, but uh fifty, I think, uh adds other stuff, other duties at the side.
Kind of an omnibus, look at everything else too, kind of.
Yep, et cetera. So I I agree with you, Wendy, on combining thirteen and fourteen potentially.
Okay.
Yeah, you could even just strike out fourteen and make fourteen the second sentence of thirteen.
Yeah.
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 Great.
Okay. So so then fifteen, I gotta reread it.
It becomes one L. Unless Kevin disagrees. I think he's playing with me.
I see fifteen as look at all those uh sections that when the when the charter was changed to town manager and it didn't carry through to every single section.
Yeah.
Um you know, it it there's lots of stuff in the town charter now that uh town manager doesn't do that most towns' town managers do.
Well, unless they go away from a town manager to a form of government, then we're saying to change it to the town manager from our government when we may not have it. I'm 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 not being serious there, but
No, I I get that, yeah.
we're saying to look at the form of government, we don't know that this is gonna be.
Yeah, a whole lot of things have to change, that's the direction we're going in.
I know, well, we're not giving that direction.
Shouldn't fifteen though read at least like may not have been completed, then may have been not completed.
They have not been.
Yeah.
They have not been.
Yeah.
They have been not completed, may not have been completed.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the English major, is that what you do?
May not.
No, there's no splitting infinitives here.
Um, okay, I just I wanna just make sure I have. Oh, I had an item that I I had on my other list that I I I don't wanna like open more stuff here.
Please, we don't have executive session.
We do.
I know.
Still have to put on the meds for last time too.
Mm-hmm, I got a lot of changes to that too. So, um I the one thing that I I brought up because of the microburst was the, and I don't even know if it's in the charter, is the the um emergency operations center when we open an E O C, the chief elected is not included at that table. And I wondered if the chief elected should be at the table to know what's going on in the town.
Uh that's because the statute says the chief executive officer shall be the
Okay.
uh but it would not it in a in a situation where you have a an emergency, you have to have a clear cut, well-defined chain of command.
Yep.
And the statute really tells you how to do that, and we went through this with the pandemic.
Yep.
Um certainly something could be looked at to have informational consultation role with the chief elected, cause the chief elected uh probably has a communication role with the public.
Yes.
This is the person that the public elected, but probably doesn't have a chain of command role.
Okay.
One person has to be in charge.
I know, and and I just I was just could you know, I know Mark reached out obviously with the the microburst and everything like that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh but but um you know, we weren't at the table for what was the best for the town, and not that saying that we would have made any different decisions, but no one was at the table, but I I'll I'll drop that here if they ask if that's something that I wanna throw out at some point, um.
I I'd offer Wendy that I I understand where you're going, I think it's actually worth a healthy debate on it, but I think that's something that we might be able to handle outside of the charter.
Yeah.
And that's a part of the management and 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 board
Proceed. Yeah. Yes.
uh role from an information sharing standpoint, and if you felt like it was not being dealt with that way, we could we could deal with it through some other kind of policy that we established regarding information sharing.
Sure.
I don't think it needs to go on the charter.
Okay, good, because I'm happy to not add something else. Okay, so I think we have updates for this.
Great.
Um I just wanna add a couple things that I included of asks, just to make sure everybody, and then we can turn to what Mark has.
Yeah.
Um I just thought it was in the best interests um in the letter to ask the he these are printed on both sides of the paper, so it's bothering me. Um I did wanna ask the commission that they consider um that all meetings be recorded so that everybody can have access to see what's going on um and hear the conversation, because I in I I don't think that was done before and I've read through when we talked about this, all the meeting minutes and things like that. You can kind of get the gist of what's going on, cause they were really detailed, but it would be good to keep a recorded um version, so uh it's something that I'm just proposing as a suggestion. Um I also included, thank you to um Mark Nelson, that we would ask Franklin to serve as the administrative liaison to the charter revision commission, um just from work we've done with him in personnel sub. And that's a good, it's a good a career item for him, and Tom's gonna be having to be the deputy, so um we thought that would be a good item. I also mentioned that there were funds appropriated in the last commission that if this board so chooses to need any sort of consulting work on charters, they can tap into that funding. And then I just also put in um that we look at these town town manager council form of governments best practices that are out there, cause there's tons of them out there. So so that now, the other thing that I included was um Mark, we had received the some of the items from from town staff and I didn't wanna really take ownership of those, cause we hadn't discussed them and they weren't coming from our board. Um so Mark asked as a courtesy and um if if I would, he would could put them in a letter, I said if you put them in a letter, we could potentially forward them to the charter revision commission um saying that these are not coming from our board, these are not our recommendations, but that's open for the board to discuss, cause I've heard from a couple people, so I'm gonna open that conversation up because I don't necessarily agree with the items in there, but I don't know if it's my place to say um I don't agree with getting rid of certain boards and commissions. And the discussion that we had on our list was so um what's the word?
Consensus.
Courteous, you know what I mean, like let's not hurt anybody's feelings, like we took out, well, we will take out the board of ed, I'm fine with that too, if everybody else is
A monster.
um.
I just I find that um these requests are, I just find that um
So anyway.
The the town request?
That Mark stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Mark's.
Yeah, I just find they're they're so specific, they're almost like exact changes that they would like, they're just very specific and some are quite disruptive in their specificity, and I don't know if they're just so leading, like it's like
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Was there anything?
Change this line, change this to say this, it's almost like it's.
Is there anything from his letter that we feel that we have a consensus on to take ownership of it and put board as the board of selectmen?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Cause I mean, there is some stuff like the odd number.
Yeah, start with yours, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah.
Start with what?
Start with yours, like you have you you offered that, I'm 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 agreeing with you, go ahead.
And I like, I just wanna say, I did say that there were some overlap, so if we if you if they are wanna be included, that's fine.
Um.
Right.
Um well, one of the things Wendy also just brought up, not Wendy, I'm sorry, Diana, um
Thanks.
was if we, do you have the language, what did it say specifically, the budget timeline, is that in the charter, the timeline for the budget?
Yeah, right, cause that was on our one list that was consolidated, but it didn't make this list and I'm or anybody's list, so to to review the budget timeline requirements within the charter. And is that something we want?
If if it came from our board, yeah, I don't remember seeing it, but.
That was on it's number eighteen on that initial list addition issues identified by members of the board of selectmen.
Oh, so then why isn't it on here, was it an error?
Um well, can we just add it instead of looking for where it went, can we, is everyone, is it consensus that we include that?
I guess. Yeah. Yeah.
What's the language again?
Yeah, what?
It says review the budget timeline requirements within the charter.
I am okay with that, absolutely.
Yeah, well, yeah, me too, me me too.
I am too, so let's let's add that as three Z.
Double A.
And that could you could Bob, that could be like we could group that under where we talk about the referendum triggers, we could also include that, so they.
I think that's a separate. Right.
Or you could simply in your transmit a letter, say that the board of selectmen joins the town manager in the following from his list.
But that's not on his list, this was on our original list that was sent to you, but didn't make it to this final list somehow, cause all the different list.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that was an editing error, so if that was the case, let's add it.
It's not.
Yeah.
We just wanna add it in, please.
It was number eighteen on our original list that was sent over. So it's not from the town manager or town administration.
So you wanna make it six? Maybe six rounds down.
Whatever number number we're up to.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixteen technically.
Let's do check.
Well, there won't be, because we.
They'll renumber it.
Right.
Right. Uh we we get the numbering right.
You'll renumber it.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you need the language again, or you got it?
And then.
So review, or is it, it is uh review the budget timeline requirements within the charter.
Okay.
So I wanted to go through this whole list that we sent over
Yeah, I think that's that's.
That's nice. Yeah.
and make sure every point was covered.
Yeah, I I.
There's two tokens there.
Thank you.
Wendy, before I forget, um you you mentioned the the recording of every every.
Yeah.
Only other one, it's the one that I was already.
You?
Char- charter, commission, charter.
Um. You mentioned, um so housing authority doesn't have
It's the only other one we did.
the ability to record.
No, I I was I was asking that we record the charter commission meeting.
I think we should consider.
Oh, okay, I think we have a way to record.
That's how we're reporting commissions policies for those to record.
Yeah. And would that be on S C M?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I just know that it stretches the.
Well, I don't know how it will be on, but I think it should be.
No, I think.
But I think it should be, I agree.
I think more more people would wanna watch that, then no offense, this is what I.
And and.
Cheer for zoning, murder of fields, but no people are gonna wanna watch that in the Z V A.
We can chop it up, just kidding. From it.
Yeah. Cause I think we would want it for historical purposes, to take that back on.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think it would be appropriate, Wendy, to go through Mark's list and see if we wanna take ownership as our own on any of his or
I agree. Yeah. Okay.
I.
pursue it otherwise.
But yeah, and then yeah, yeah, and again, I like I said, I included forwarding Mark's list as presented as a courtesy, but that we did not vote on then or discuss them because they're not coming from our board, so if you're saying you wanna take, yeah.
No, I agree with that, but if there was stuff that like a lot of is dup- dupli- duplicate.
Okay.
Can we?
Well, I did, I I would say, and I'm not editing, but the whole council seats and stuff like that, I don't think it should be, if we couldn't be that definitive, why would these be that definitive?
Prescriptive.
Because ours carry the the force of uh of of requiring the charter commission to review it.
Policy governance.
Right.
These are a conversation among professional management, um
Okay.
to actually, in this case to you, and we're deciding whether or not we wanna forward it. I'm sure that um the commission will ask for uh testimony from town staff and the relevant departments as a best practice.
Well, that's a question that you just raised, if we don't wanna forward this ourselves, we know that the town manager could send this and bring it himself, and I'm
I imagine he would.
I'm happy to not forward it, I like I said, I offered it as a courtesy to Mark.
I I suspect when you all get your day in court before the commission, they're gonna ask you, we got this list from the town manager, do you agree with this, do you agree with that, do you have and it's gonna be a give and take, or you could say at that time uh we join the town manager and asking that you consider um you know allowing the town manager to approve to approve the departments to apply for grants, you know, that that's that's a charter provision. Current charter provision has come up time and time again, where grant applications have to come to the board of selectmen rather than grant awards. No, which can't even apply for a grant without board of selectmen, there's some wisdom to that, but it from an administrative point of view, it becomes very cumbersome, because some of these grant application deadlines are very tight.
Right. Yeah.
So uh anyway, that's. So can we can we add that to to our own, is anyone opposed to that?
It's like seven.
Was was.
With the grant one?
No.
No.
Well, I know, because I don't feel I you you I I'm gonna say that's an administrative request, I'm not asking.
Seven.
Cause I I would say too to that, so yeah, that if they wanna do that, but I would say on my side, I don't wanna not know about any grants, I don't necessarily need to be in the approval process, but I would say I wanna know that we've applied for stuff as an acknowledgement, just like the per the pack permits, we get a acknowledgement, so I don't really wanna personally, I don't wanna touch that, if that's something the town manager wants to ask for, I think that's great, but I'm I don't.
Then I think we just send Mark's letter from Mark to them and it stands on its own legs, and if they have questions, they come back to us. But I I don't, Mark, maybe you can clarify why we would send your letter, it it's hearsay technically.
It works for us, it works for us.
Right, cause it works for us.
It's because I work for you and and it as a courtesy, I mean, and I appreciate the courtesy that the first selectmen's extending, so so let me just say that. I I have the same uh respect for the process, so um kind of what I was hoping for is that as part of your, as one of your recommendations or suggestions, you would say also consider staff and administrative suggestions, in other words, rather than going through the list and saying we agree with this or that, you would you I would show you, these are some of the things we're thinking about, some of which you might agree with and many of them you won't. Um to make the case that hopefully this board would would make one motion, which is to include administrative requests. I would just say, and I appreciate the opportunity, that in your prior discussion, I made a couple of notes here, at one point Wendy said quote, we're not asking to do it, we're just asking to consider it. That is exactly what I did, so it's it's really, I I have to own the letter, cause I signed it. I just wanna for the record point out that some of these came from your pred- my predecessor, Lee Erdman, who was asked to do a a deep dive on on some of these things, and and I think many of the board members may have seen his draft report. Uh and so I can't take credit or ownership for them, but I did tell Lee during our transition work that that when and if charter review preceded, that I would do what I could to to move that list forward, the others came from staff. Um I did also have a conversation with Wendy because there's a couple of things that um I personally do um hope to get an opportunity to talk to the commission about recommendations that aren't in the letter, those are just my own, this was really kind of intended to be uh just a illustrative or a compilation maybe of of what had been sitting on that desk even before I got here, they weren't things that that I made up and so um respectfully, what I'm asking for is is that you ask the town attorney to include number seventeen F or whatever it might be to kindly, you know, consider the recommendations of the of the staff and the town manager, that that's all.
So I just say, so this is not a comprehensive list, we don't have more items?
I have a couple of items that were mine, that if they asked and as as Bob alluded to, I'm sure we'll all have our, he calls it our day in court. Uh and so if they if they say uh if and when I'm asked, you know, then I would answer that question, there's a couple of things uh that are just, you know, my own and and uh they they never made it to Lee's list. Um so I I uh and they're not big deals, they're more like you said, I think they're 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 very specific. In other words, they're they're really, they go straight to the efficiency of government. Um mine do not have anything to do with the form of government, whether you have a mayor, council, nothing like that at all, we're just looking, I'm looking to make things a little more streamlined and um I say efficient, but but I guess it's fair to say quicker, cause it might not, you know, not everybody would agree with that, so.
Yes, my only comment on that, I I don't, I might have said it, is cause I know that there's a couple other things that are not on here. So it's almost like these are the only ones that were coming through us, the other ones will come from another channel. Why wouldn't they all go together from your recommendations and staff's recommendations as one shot?
Well, I would say the same thing's true of all of the six of you, so I would have assumed that 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 I don't wanna speak for them, but presumably the commission is gonna talk to each of you individually and they would talk to me as well. I I wouldn't wanna suggest to your board that that yours is a comprehensive list, what if you wanted to add something, you know, three weeks later? Yeah, I think what's fair for the goose is good for the gander or whatever it is, and I can't sit here today and say that we even have a comprehensive list because you know, certainly Lee's list was too lengthy and there were a number of, that was just my view, no offense to anybody who saw it, but it was it was, there were a lot of items on it.
There's pages and pages and pages.
I think so.
Pages and pages and pages.
I guess where I have a little bit of disagreement in that is that it's our board that decided to open this, it's going to come back to us on things we'd like to vote on and I think that to not know what our town manager and staff is going to them with in addition to this and then it just comes back, it just seems like that um transparency would make this process better if we were made aware of the ask coming from town.
That's what we're trying to do and we at least that that I couldn't agree with you more, that's why I submitted the letter and and we're having this discussion, I just can't in fairness say that the letter captures everything that we might uh or that staff might ask, when I was, not every member of the staff is even interested in this. Um but you know, you do only do it every seven years, I think, and so it's fair, I think, to I'm on behalf of the administration for 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 me to ask you to to include one recommendation in your letter that says please consider, and again, you know, we're just asking that they consider. Um I know Wendy's comment, I I jot it down, Steve, I also wrote one of yours down and you said, I and I quote, I don't think I'm a proponent, I'm just asking that they consider it. It's the same thing with my letter, I'm 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 not propon- proposing.
So what's the difference between us attaching it and you sending it to them, do you think they're just qualifying it?
Um, just just courtesy, no, it's just the the courtesy of it, so my understanding that, and Bob correct me if I'm wrong, state statute gives you the power to send them a guidance document. And that's a very, that's that's a weighty, you you guys have the the right and the and the duty to do that, anybody can send them a letter. But coming through this board, you appointed them, so the question for you, the threshold question is, do you want them to consider staff recommendations or not?
Yes, but but I I do want them to consider staff recommendations, we've had this conversation. Um I don't want the appearance, I'll be perfectly honest, that our board
Of course.
took these over and said and sanctioned these, and I tried to make that clear because there's a lot of po- political things in here that are not administrative. And so how are they coming from the administrative side, cause these are, there's political things in here that I don't know why they would come from the administrative side. Um and that's a question, you know, in hindsight now, looking at this, um you know, there's no busy, sorry, that I'm just gonna say like you know, what is the administrative reason to change the seats on the council, right? Or even the board of finance, I I I would say, going back to what Kevin said, and that's why I'm trying to not get into this, I would have said review the functions of these boards instead of coming out and saying just get rid of them, because that's that's a that's a hot hot button, right, and it's a political hot button.
A stance. Yeah.
Same like we said, we're not gonna say get rid of the planning and zoning, or we're gonna make board of that elected, because that's a that's insulting and a hot button to people politically, so so if if I I just, like I said, I'm I will forward this, but I want it well known that we did not sanction this list, and Kevin, like Kevin, yeah, I'm.
And that's.
Sorry, you.
So I I think if we attach it as like exhibit A that was submitted to us rather than as a part of our, like that makes a distinction that in exhibit A, for your consideration, it has been submitted for us, right? Exhibit A is submitted to us, that we will pass along, but it is, you know, it is nothing that we voted on, it is nothing that came from us. So that's why I, you know, if we, I'm proposing that you attach it listed as exhibit A.
I I did you read what I included in the letter?
Yes, I did.
So I tried to word it in such a way that distance us, and Kevin, you wanted to say something, so I'm interested.
So my my observation uh here is that I appreciate Mark's willingness to put this together, including uh Lee's comments, but I feel highly uncomfortable with forwarding it from this board. Um I think that um I would like if it's acceptable to everybody else that we include a a note in the um the introduction where you're writing uh to the charter commission uh that we um are specifically encouraging town staff to uh work with the charter commission and provide recommendations as they see fit. And that gives the wide latitude that I would want from professional management to work with a duly appointed um you know, boarder commission, to give them guidance as they see fit as a professional manager. Um but the content here is not something that I feel like this board should forward.
Okay, that I so so thank you for saying that, uh one thing that I would point out that in in the letter, I said be it resolved, I did our res- resolution that includes our items, right? The second be it resolved that they're supposed to follow is on the commission seek input from the Simsbury boards and commissions and town departments for issues they believe should be addressed in the charter, right?
My 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 comment on that was specifically um outlining and I hope that this empowers town staff to speak freely.
Yeah, okay.
So if we call it out separately, yes, they can invite them there, but if I was an employee, uh you know, a a second assistant, you know, plow driver, um maybe I wouldn't necessarily speak freely unless I was specifically told that I should.
So. And I think that there should be a conversation with the town manager.
Yeah, definitely.
Rather than just um a recommendation.
Heather, does this address your concern of 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 um we have no visibility
Yeah.
what the town staff, what the, I guess, town offices are saying to this charter commission, cause it kinda takes it out of our, it's now, we just gave you that one piece and now
Hmm.
you're getting all this other information, we have no idea.
Well, they have public audience and their meetings are open, just like ours are, correct?
Um I mean, I suppose if it's if it's transparent, it's being taped, I just think that if if like right now, if you have other, if you have additional things, why aren't they uh on here if you already know?
Yeah. So.
Because I'm not sure, I wanna bring them up and and I'm not sure, I haven't I haven't decided, like there's one about public safety that Wendy asked me about and my my response to that question, to be candid and on the record is, I'm rethinking, you know, the what I had thought previously and I had a conversation. So you know, unless o- opinions, at least speaking for myself, Heather, if the opinion is crystallized, it would be here. If it's not crystallized, it's not here, and and what I'm saying is is that it may crystallize later, I'm not trying to not be transparent, this is a pretty uh comprehensive list and and illustrative of the sorts of things that we're thinking uh should be discussed, right, that's all.
So can I can I, so it sounds like people aren't comfortable with this, so here's here's one idea is we don't, I don't attach the list and I change um per, so I'm I'm just looking at the resolutions, ones from us, ones from the board in the town. I could say per the second resolution above, we ask that you seek input from the chairs of our elected boards and commissions in all cases and from appointed boards and commissions if they're under discussion or have suggested changes, and then include, you know, we ask that you seek input from the town manager and and town staff um for for their administrative recommendations.
Right.
And you can, you can say you should.
And then we don't, we don't, and you expect a letter from the town manager.
You could.
And then we don't, and then we're not tied to it, I mean, I I think that's a concern, it'll come from you and it this is not definitive and then we'll.
We can, we can even give them top billing here, put them before the chairs of our elected.
Yeah. Okay, well, I have to rewrite this now, but um and then we're not, the letter, we don't even, we're not discussing it and I take out the bottom part.
Right.
And plus hopefully the the charter commission is watch watches this and they'll see.
Right. Yeah, see, and and um and oh, one question I did ask too, Tom told me, I I was gonna ask if we have a separate um webpage for the town charter, Tom said we have one, so that's really good for transparency and that everybody knows where to go, so so let's.
Yes.
Bring it home.
Wrap it up.
So Bob, you got all your changes, right?
I've got the changes to the list.
A through Z.
To the list, I have the changes to the letter.
We'll collaborate.
Okay, we'll collaborate, we're pretty good at that, um and then send it.
I have your list in Word, so I can give it to the appropriate people to make these changes.
And I'm glad Diana, thanks for finding the one that got dropped off the list, and that was the only one that you saw that got dropped off.
There's only one other, but I don't know if it necessarily needs to be, um I can, it was.
It might have been consolidated if it was variously.
The labor attorney.
No, it was the labor attorney.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Well, I I I just, I remember that one.
Yeah.
Um consider prohibiting the use of the labor attorney for personal issues when not in the interest of the town, that was the only other one that was not somehow touched.
Yeah.
It's a little.
I didn't write that.
It's a little specific.
Right, that and that's why I was like, maybe it's a policy, a policy specific to our board, not necessarily for charter.
I think that's a one on one.
Yeah.
Um but everything else I made sure was touched from our list of the twenty nine items.
Okay.
Um so the the use of the labor attorney, that just may be so a policy that we need to do as a as a board rather than part of charter.
Yeah, cause.
Yeah.
It it not only applies to labor attorney, applies to town attorney, bond counsel, you know.
Right. Right.
Anybody else can.
Correct.
And you know, on on the attorney side, there's also a a real caution about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing I found is I put per resolution voted on by ten twenty three, it was nine twenty three, so I have to, I have to change the letter anyway, cause I made a mistake. Okay, so I'm going to adjust the letter, um I'm gonna leave the asks that I had in there in here, um I am going to refer to the two resolutions and expand on the section to talk to the town manager and staff for their input.
And that we've instructed them to speak freely, if that's acceptable to everybody else, I think we should um let the charter.
Do we have to say speak freely?
Look, if I was staff, I would want it to be uh explicit.
Well, then, do we say that we all speak freely?
And what if Amy's gonna be asked a question about whether or not there should be a board of finance?
True.
Just saying.
Well, I think anybody knows that they should be able to speak freely.
Well, you know, it's it's not necessarily implied, make it explicit, I think would give comfort.
I don't know. Okay, that's fine, okay, Kevin, can you, can you write that for me and send it to me?
That's okay.
Yeah.
My question.
Sure, I'll come up with something.
Delegate, I'll just write something good, so if we rewrite this.
Kevin Beal should not be used to this.
It's too weird.
He's doing it, he's doing it.
We're not, I'm gonna send it back out to everybody, make sure it's good. Um we we don't have to, oh, the only thing we really have to have for tomorrow night is the August first date, if if we can get this cleaned up for tomorrow, great, right?
Yeah, that would be difficult to do though, with these changes, but I I think that if you could uh send the letter.
The first charter commission meeting.
Are we allowed to do it?
Oh.
Send a letter saying we reviewed, the listeners reviewed last night, it's forthcoming, however, we'd like to set the report back date as August first.
Okay, and just for transparency purposes, Bob suggested that I I go and just thank the board and commission, introduce myself and I can say what I you just said, and then I'm leaving, I'm not staying for the meeting, um if you guys.
Yeah, but it should be in a form, written communication to them, because that's a statutory thing you have to say.
Yes, okay, so, well, then let's get this cleaned up for tomorrow, cause then I'm done, then we're done. Bob's like.
You're you're assuming I I have time to do this tomorrow, which I don't, but the letter could go tomorrow, just saying, you know.
Okay, I, okay, I could say the letter and um to follow our our list.
True.
That's to follow.
This will be followed from.
I wanted, the the thing was, I wanted the items included in the letter, so everything was in one place, so that the.
Well, you can send this, that your longer letter, which I think is very good, that doesn't, the letter you said tomorrow won't get rid of the longer letter, it's just
Okay.
asking them to, just let them know that
Okay.
board of selectmen had a thorough discussion.
Okay, the list to follow.
List to follow, and the board has has set a return report back date of August first.
Yeah, so he's he's saying do another letter in addition to this, just a shorter, a briefer letter.
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm just gonna take this letter and just do the front page here.
One line, one.
A one line?
Yeah, cause you don't wanna have the resolutions without the list.
Okay. Okay.
Right, whatever you wanna do, but it should be short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
Letter, letter forthcoming.
From from me.
From you as first one.
Z C ing the board.
But you want August first by tomorrow, in that short letter?
I think so, I think so.
All right, I could, that I could handle, Kevin doesn't have to have his piece written and.
Okay.
And I just wanna thank, thank, I wanna thank everybody too for your consideration and and obligated by
Do like cheese dough ready, damn.
We could have more stuff.
some of the comments I heard tonight, cause we'll revise our letter as well, since it's not being attached, we'll have time to clean it up and tighten it up and also.
We're in now.
Well, we can remove what, we can remove the items that were duplicative, cause Diana's correct, were a few that that overlapped and.
I I I'd offer that, I think that the more duplication I would see as a commissioner would reinforce the idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So especially that this is coming from professional management.
I do that.
That's there's an agreement, right?
Yeah.
Um that's that's, you don't have to maybe expand on it, but that's uh totally up to you as how you translate the letter.
Yeah, 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 good idea.
Mark has pointed that out too.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we have the minutes to do, so the the um, I don't think, go ahead, I'll ask for a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of five fif- at five fifteen in November eighteen twenty twenty four, what was that meeting? I agree, um.
That was the executive session.
Executive session.
Oh, yeah, we still have executive session, oh crap, okay, is it?
Yeah.
So still, I, some of, so we can get to discussion on it.
But you changed it, right?
Right, but.
Second, second.
Well, not for that one, I don't.
Oh.
All, okay, is there any discussion on the special meeting minutes?
No.
Right?
No.
The um, oh, oh wait.
There's one, special meeting.
I'm sorry, the there's two special meetings, the fif- the five fifteen special meeting.
Technically. Yeah.
The five fifty, yeah, that's the first, yes, executive session, so I have made a motion and uh Kevin has seconded it.
Okay, is there any discussion, I said that already too.
No.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, now the fun part, um I'd like to ask for a motion on the special meeting, the six o'clock special meeting minutes.
We'll approve the minutes, second.
Some of. Approve the minutes, thank you, Kevin, um any discussion? I have discussion.
Wendy?
Please discuss. Um, so one question I asked was, now this is hard to read now, um this is kind of funny because now I
Love it.
Okay, I I I had, that's printed out for me, um I for I item two, the the planning referral item, referral to planning commission to explore the potential whatever, this, sorry, but it was printed for me and I can't read it, I have to get online. It said, you know, we said the pro- project hadn't been made public and then it said Mr. Beal made a motion to table the referral, and I don't think that was correct, I don't think you made a motion to table, because Diana made the motion.
Oh, that's.
I was gonna table it and then we got into a discussion and then Diana made a motion, remember, that was like the the hanging tab.
Right.
Because we didn't do it so.
And I refused the table.
I don't know if, Kevin, do you know that you made that motion to table, I don't think that was correct.
I did make a motion to table the item, uh cause I didn't wanna consider it, and that failed due to a lack of a second and then I voted for it on the main motion.
You did.
Okay.
Correct.
Or voted against it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, then I should have rewatched the meeting, that's my bad.
Yeah, I caused difficulty, so.
That is correct. Okay, um the other thing I asked about was, well, one thing is the June meeting, it says we changed the June meeting to June sixteen, but it didn't say we got rid of the June twenty fourth meeting. So I just make that correction. Um and then at that, I'm not gonna make any more changes.
In the public audience, the second time that Susan Messino uh speaks, it says Susan Mason, that's just a typo on her name.
Okay.
It's on page three, uh she's the second speaker after Diane Nash.
Three. Yeah.
Mession.
It's French.
It is. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find it.
Mession.
I have no other comment.
Okay, I did a little, but I can't find them.
I'll call a question.
So. I I I'm just gonna leave it at that for now, cause I don't. So I guess I'm all those in favor of the minutes with those changes, say aye.
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 Okay, um now I'd like to ask for a motion to move into executive session.
Some of.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
I didn't agree.
Yeah, I have to go
I've never been able to second.
Oh, yeah.
Tom, I forgot to mention
I I was thinking